Welcome, if people can find a seat. There are some, I believe there's some up front. Couple of roles here. Make yourselves comfortable. Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order. It is two o'clock PM straight up. May we have a roll call please?
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Present.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Present.
Thank you.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the State of New Mexico and the Zia symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Our land acknowledgement. This Santa Fe County building is located on the traditional homelands of the Tewa people at the place known as Oga Poge. We honor the land itself and all those who have deep connections to the land as Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with neighboring communities and all who remain stewards of this land throughout generations. We will have now our moment of reflection from Laura Chavis.
Let us take a moment of reflection. Let our decision today reflect the highest aspiration for Santa Fe County. A place of opportunity, resilience, and compassionate service for others.
Thank you. We'd also like to take a moment of reflection for two people who are recognized in our community. One, Mrs. Haramio, Mrs. Jay from Rancho de Chimayo. One, Mrs. Haramio, Mrs. Jay, from Rancho de Chimayo. That place burned, she brought it back, and it is still a lovely place to be. So, we lost her last week and we want to recognize her memory, as well as Cipriano Vihil, who taught hundreds of kids to play the guitar, and when they didn't have guitars, he made them guitars like things, we'll call them guitars, with cigar boxes. And he taught, I spent time learning the cigar box from Cipriano Vihil. So I'd also like to recognize and take a moment of silence for them as well. And we have Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to give a shout out to the family and of the community of Chimayo for the loss of Mrs. Jay. I know that she was near and dear to a lot of our community here, far and wide, way beyond Chimayo. And there's folks in this room that probably had their first job working at Rancho de Chimayo, and she was a mentor and a leader to so many, and she will be missed. I was lucky enough to get to work with her a little bit on issues in Chimayo over the last few years, and I will miss her. Also want to give an acknowledgement to the work that Robert Redford, one of our constituents as well, who passed away since our last meeting and lived in District One, and I was honored to have him as a constituent. I don't know if he voted in New Mexico, but it's okay, I'll count him as a constituent. He did great work in highlighting a lot of work in the North, and I love the fact that he had done a lot of work in the Chimayo area. So I thought that there was two big people in that community that are lost, but had applied themselves to support that community so nicely. So, we say thank you to both of them.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize all people who have died from gun violence, and the children of Gaza who are being targeted in the interest of finding the enemy. But for all who have died of gun violence nationally and internationally. If we have a moment of silence for everyone. Thank you. You may be seated. And if I may share the story that I have, the Robert Redford story in 2007, when we were working on the purchase of Los Luceros, and this is when the state was going to buy Los Luceros. And at that time, Sundance Festival was going to be one of the partners, as directed or worked out with our governor at the time, Bill Richardson. And I sat for several hours convincing them that they needed to pay attention to water rights in northern New Mexico, and how important it was for them to acknowledge how important water rights are to the people of northern New Mexico. And only until last week, or the week before as it was, did I realize he was the guy who directed the Milagro Greenfield Beanfield War, and he knew all about the water rights in northern New Mexico. So the joke was on me. Robert Redford already knew about how important water rights were. I didn't need to school him for a couple of hours, fool that I was. Anyway, so, thank you for allowing me to share that story, or bearing with it, thank you. All right, moving on, we are now at approval of the agenda. Manager Schaefer, do we have any changes to the agenda as provided?
Chair Bustamante, there are no recommended changes from staff to the agenda as presented. I would note that we posted the initial agenda for today's meeting last Tuesday, September 23rd, and the final amended agenda was posted Friday afternoon at approximately 3:08 PM, which is in excess of the 72 hours required by the Open Meetings Act. The substantive changes to the amended agenda were to add two items, 8L and 8M, related to funding for the regular local election, in terms of funding being provided to the county from the Secretary of State's office. So, those were the changes between the initial and amended agenda of a substantive nature. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Given the minimal changes to the agenda, do we have a motion to...
I will move to approve as reported.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Green, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kakari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. Years of service, retirement, and new hire recognitions, County Manager Greg Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Want to recognize, in this order, retirements from county service in the month of August, as well as those who are recognizing significant anniversaries with the county in the month of September, and then finally wanted to acknowledge new hires and volunteers for the county during the month of August. First, want to acknowledge the retirements of Michael Martinez in the Sheriff's Department or Office, Joseph Black in our Public Works Department, and Patricia Max Hendren in our Land Use Department. All three of those county employees retired in the month of August. We want to thank them for their service and wish them all the best in the next chapter of their lives. We have several employees who are recognizing their fifth year anniversary with Santa Fe County. Those are Jeffrey Horn in the Public Works Department, as well as Samantha Woodman in the Public Works Department, Jennifer Romero in the County Assessors Office, and Marcus Ward in the Sheriff's Office. So congratulate them and thank them for their continuous years of service for Santa Fe County. We had multiple new hires during the month of August, to include many firefighter cadets. I'll start with the firefighter cadets. Joining us in August and currently going through the academy are Christopher Baker, Brendan Dugan, Ryan Dunhill, Merrick Elam, Aaron Gutierrez, Michael Holmes, Nuvia Macias, Xavier Navarez, Mitchell O'Brien, Zachary Saez, Jacob Serrano, and Cody Trumbull. So again, want to recognize all of the new firefighter cadets who are working towards joining our regional staff. In addition, there were three volunteer firefighters who have achieved levels of certification that allow them to actively respond either on a firefighting capacity or emergency medical services. They're David Cox, Linda Gore, and John Young. In terms of other new employees, we have a new Affordable Housing Administrator, Ruben Macias, in our Land Use Department, Administrative Assistant Kayla Aris. In the Legal Department, helping to continuously support our public records response, we have Alexis Ergot, who joins the team as a legal and public records clerk. Welcome Noah Velazquez, in the Public Works Department, who joins us as a member of our very important custodial team that's responsible for keeping our facilities in the top shape that they are. In terms of the Sheriff's Department, two public safety aides have joined our team, Isaiah Mazz and Jonas Waliquist. So want to again acknowledge and recognize both retirements, as well as those who are celebrating their fifth year anniversary, and say welcome to all of the new county employees and volunteer firefighters. Thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. It's really great to see a lot of new hires, and it's very hard to see some great talent retiring, but we're grateful for everyone's service. Are there any comments? To thank everyone, for those of you starting out, and for those who are leaving us, for your commitment to serving the public. Okay, next, recognition of employees for awards, accreditations, recognitions, and other accomplishments. Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. I'll actually yield the floor to Melissa Martinez from the Human Resources and Risk Management Division. She's here to provide some information relative to the recently concluded County Managers Commit to be Fit Challenge, to include announcing those entities that placed in that challenge. Go ahead, Melissa.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am pleased to be here today to announce the winners of the 2025 Walk to the Grand Canyon Step Challenge. This year, the walking challenge ran from May 1st through July 31st. The goal was to reach the Grand Canyon by encouraging employees to be more physically active every day and to build lasting healthy habits. To reach the Grand Canyon, participants aimed for 890,000 steps in three months, which is an average of 9,565 steps per day. We had an outstanding 81 Santa Fe County employees participate this year, who tracked and logged their steps using devices such as Fitbits or smartphone apps. There were monthly drawings for employees to win prizes for submitting their steps on time. By the end of the challenge, participants logged a county-wide total of 52,303,624 steps, the equivalent of 26,152 miles walked together. That's an amazing achievement, and it shows what we can accomplish when we support each other and take it one step at a time. Finally, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for their support of this initiative, and for continuing to promote employee health and wellness across the county. So, let's give them all a big round of applause. And I'm going to go ahead and announce the winners, if you're in the audience here today. I'm going to ask that you come forward. So, third place goes to Renee Nix, with a total of 1,391,991 steps. Second place goes to Christopher Lopez, with 1,502,309 steps. And first place goes to Daniel Solis, with an incredible 1,823,907 steps. And next, I would like to present the winners for the 2025 Manager Commit to be Fit Challenge. For the past 10 years, Santa Fe County has invited employees from each department to take part in wellness activities. One of our signature programs, the Managers Commit to be Fit Challenge, brings together teams of four to six employees who compete over eight weeks, eight weeks in three areas, which include exercise, healthy eating, and weekly mini-challenges. Teams track their progress, encourage one another, and earn bonus points by trying out new healthy habits. This year, we had 18 teams participate in the challenge. As this year's challenge comes to a close, I want to thank all the teams for your dedication, energy, and teamwork. Over the past several weeks, you embraced new challenges, supported one another, and showed a strong commitment to wellness. I would also like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their continued support in providing wellness opportunities to Santa Fe County employees. Congratulations to everyone on completing the 2025 Managers Commit to be Fit Challenge, and thank you for making it a success. So this year's winners in third place are members from Fire, Sheriff's Office, Finance, and Community Services. The winners for third place are Ladies Unite. Second place goes to team members from Human Resources, Heart Racers. And this year's first place winners goes to Pumping Iron, which includes Human Resources and Fire Department. And that's it.
Yay, congratulations to all of you and your commitment to health and keeping moving. Bad things happen when we don't move, so congratulations to all of you. It's actually inspiring, it's inspirational, we'd love to see, you guys did it. Us, on the other hand. Commission impossible being operative. And any other comments for the group? Commissioner Green?
Just congratulations for the teamwork and a million eight hundred thousand steps. Don't go away, don't take one more step there. You know, it's like, that's pretty impressive, so congratulations. As truly inspiration, I would, yes, good job, that's amazing, thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Anything further, Manager Schaefer, from recognition, awards, and accreditations?
That is all, thank you, Chair Bustamante.
Thank you, Manager. Now we will move to matters of public concern, subject to three minutes. We have three people who have signed up, two in person. Before we start with those who are on the list, do we have anyone else who would like to speak from the audience? Okay, we will go ahead and, go ahead and approach the microphone, please? Three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Michael Rodriguez. I have a house in Rio en Medio that I've had for over 40 years. So this is regarding the Rio en Medio Trail Access. I've been using it for that time, and I'm in favor of creating the access again. It's been in a little bit of trouble since the pandemic. I want to thank, first of all, the Commission for all the work it has already done. Adeline Murphy has spent a lot of time, and so has others in the county to try to make it happen, so I want to express appreciation for that. I know the trail has been in public use forever, and I want to see it open again to all the county residents. I know that there has been issues about parking. I know that there's a landholder at the Trail Access who has offered her property for the parking. I know that there's some work being done now to try to get road access to that, and appreciate the county working on that in order to make that happen. It's a beautiful area, access is close to my heart, and actually close to many, many people. Everybody who uses it loves it, and people have been using it forever. And I encourage work with the Forest Service, who is also involved with that, so that it can be open to all county residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Eric Lujan, and today I end 25 years of government service as the last two years of city manager in the City of Espanola. My sister stands, sits behind me, poor thing. But today, I'm here as a parent. And before I move forward, I want to acknowledge Commissioner Green and the last two years of the hard work that he gave to the City of Espanola, and always being very responsive to me in any need that we had in that community. Thank you, Commissioner Bustamante, you don't know me, but I served with your uncle, Dr. Adrian Bustamante, in the Santa Fe 400, a great man. Your aunt served as county clerk for two terms. But today, I stand here as a disappointed father. My daughter served as this year's 2025 Reina de las Fiesta de Santa Fe, Kaylin Rose Lujan in Medina. So Greg, I want to appeal to you as a father, I've known you a long time. I've known you a long time. It's very disappointing, heartbreaking to me when my daughter, who lives with me, came home to tell me that they were kicked out of the county building. Now, whatever transpired, whatever the actions, it was Deputy County Manager's fault, or because my ex-spouse is informing that during their meeting with the Fiesta Council, she sits on the Board of the Fiesta Council, that he, the Deputy County Manager, was trying to take the heat for it, or the HR Risk Manager, Ms. Park, who also is involved. But it's disheartening, because my daughter worked so hard, that whole court. My cousin, who was the Governor of San Juan Pueblo, Oquiu Huinga Pueblo, my first cousin, his daughter served on that court, as well as the Native American princesses. And his words, to me, he couldn't hear today, was his disappointment as well. And we had our family reunion at the Governor's Mansion this weekend, and as the Governor so gracefully stated, "This is your house," the mansion's house. Well, these government buildings belong to us, the people. You're his boss, and we're your bosses. And so it's just, Greg, I'm just very, very disappointed, and it's very disheartening, and this investigation is very concerning to me as well, because your HR Director is also your Risk Manager, and they usually conduct those investigations. But it's, I hope it's conducted not with the intent of malice, but that it's fair to everyone that this never happens again. And it's just, I'm just so disappointed, just so disheartened, because I've known you for so long, Greg. I know you when you first started here at the county, when I was the Chief Deputy Treasurer for Santa Fe County, and you were the Deputy County Manager, you were the County Attorney, you did HR now in this huge role, and Catherine Miller brought you aboard, and I've known you, I knew you when you were District Judge, so it's just so disheartening, Greg, that this would happen, and so coincidentally, it happened to be my daughter. But Madam Chair, Commissioners, you know, I ask that you, that this investigation is conducted fairly, and that, you know, whatever the conclusion is made, that it's done right, that it's brought forth, and something's done right for our community, because it is a divided community that we live in.
Thank you, Mr. Lujan. You've been heard. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. Now, my name is Virgil Vihil. You all received a letter from my organization called the Unión Protegiva. We're 450-strong, and we were established in 1915. We were established based on three peers, and those were to protect our history, culture, and our traditions. Now, this commission, individuals, and I say you, but in general, but people in your organization have discriminated against our people, not only the Spanish, but they also discriminated against natives, because your county manager has prevented the court, Fiesta Court, to come and bring celebrations to the public buildings. In fact, Mrs. Park physically held the doors and stopped them from coming in into a public building that we all, that belongs to all of us. She prevented that. So then what they do, they went to the next, your new building, and they went inside, and they were able to sing one song, and what happens? They were evicted, and they were evicted by a member of the Fiesta Council who was the past president, who was instructed to evict them from that building. Now, that is discriminatory, and you all responsible to take, well, actually, you are all responsible for this too, because you do the hiring. And next time you hire, what you need to do is hire somebody, hopefully, that knows and understands our history, culture, and our traditions, because you have people that don't do that, and we've been doing this for decades, so they fail to do that. You know, we're not asking for them to be fired. We're asking them to be removed from a position of leadership, because they are showing none. They're not showing any respect to the people of Santa Fe that have been here for over 400 years. Our natives have been here for centuries. The Spanish came here 400 years, and they don't assimilate it to where we live into, where we live. So I ask you to take some action, because if you don't, this is going to continue. Not only that, but it looks bad on all of you, because you hired, you hire individuals that don't assimilate and don't understand our history, culture, and our tradition. So I ask you, please, take some positive action here. You need to do something, and not just give them a letter of reprimand and a slap in the hand like the city does, okay? You are better than that, and we respect that you are better than that. So we ask you, please, 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 take some positive action, because individuals like these don't belong in our city government, because they discriminate against the natives and...
Thank you, Mr. De Hill. You've been heard.
The natives and the Spanish.
Thank you.
It's nothing other than that but pure discrimination.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Howard Dittmer, and I am the President of the Colinas del Sol Homeowners Association. We're located in Lamy, near the intersection of Avenue Campadres and Spur Ranch Road. Now, Avenue Campadres and Spur Ranch Road are thoroughfares. There is virtually no homes on those roads. They lead to multiple communities, and they're used by many people coming into El Dorado from the south. They're also used by businesses. There is, the Horse Barn is down there, and the Spur Ranch is down there, so there's commercial use on those. However, those are unmaintained roads, and it stands to the residents of various communities to do that, and that system doesn't work. And recently, we had a very severe storm, which essentially wiped out Spur Ranch Road. You can't get through. It is essentially impassable. As a matter of fact, it's not only impassable, but they've uncovered the gas lines, so there's exposed gas lines in the area where the road should be. Those two roads, besides being accessed to multiple communities, is also, I understand, identified as one of the main evacuation routes out of El Dorado. So the result is that one of the main evacuation routes is essentially no longer there. And with the recent approval of the solar program, that would, if it were to have a problem, if there were to be a fire, they would have to come down, because going the wrong way down Colinas del Sol, you're heading towards the fire. So it essentially blocks what should be the main egress point. In addition, all those communities are supposed to have two sources of access for emergencies. So ambulances and fire, all the homes along Spur Ranch Road and along Colinas del Sol no longer have two sources of access. So we have a serious safety issue. This is beyond the local community's ability to deal with. I spoke earlier today with the Spur Ranch Road Association member, and they have gotten prices right now, just for a patch job, to make it marginally usable is going to be $30,000. And they're talking about $100,000 to actually do the job correctly. And the homeowners don't have that kind of money. They don't have the money, and we have a safety issue, and we need your help in dealing with it.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Nicholas Raymond Aranda, Raider General, New Mexico retired. And I got out of my busy schedule. I'm 67 years old. I'm still working on national security projects, and as you can imagine, it's pretty busy this time of year. Like, busy, period. But I put, I sent an opinion to the New Mexican. I want to read it to you, and this was a couple of weeks ago.
Mr. Aranda, I want to make sure that you speak into the microphone, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
I wrote this opinion to the New Mexican a couple of weeks ago, but a friend of mine, a friend of mine recently asked me, she happens to be here today, asked me what I thought about the Fiesta Court being barred from entering a Santa Fe County public building. My first question was whether that was even legal. She wasn't sure, so I did some research. The answer is clear: No, it is not legal to bar an ethnic or cultural group from a public building. Here's why. Civil rights laws, Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, and national origin in public facilities and accommodation. That includes government buildings, such as courthouses, libraries, and schools, too. Equal protection, the Fourteenth Amendment requires states and their agencies to provide equal access to public services and facilities regardless of race or ethnicity. So the bottom line is banning ethnic and cultural groups from a public building is illegal racial discrimination, period. That leads us to the next question. Is such an act racist? The answer is yes. Racism is defined as prejudiced, discriminatory, antagonistic, directed against someone based on their race and ethnicity. Whether or not somebody considers themselves a racist, barring an ethnic group from a government building is a racist behavior. Plain and simple. There's no excuse. Policy is not an excuse. For these reasons, I strongly recommend that the Santa Fe County Commissioners take immediate action. If a public employee acted in this way, it is both by violation of the law and a racist act. To ignore it would mean the county of Santa Fe is not only tolerating, but effectively harboring racist and discriminatory practices in our government.
Thank you, sir.
Now, wait. Having said that, having said that...
I'm sorry, your time is up. Three minutes was allowed. Thank you. We've heard you.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Romero. I'm retired from the Department of Finance Administration after 48 years of service, public service, and I'm currently a Regent in New Mexico State University. I want to personally thank Chairwoman Bustamante and Commissioner Green for attending the New Mexico State Campus to Community Tour. This just demonstrates your commitment to serving your constituents and our collaboration in serving Santa Fe residents. I thought I would start by introducing myself to give you some background about how I know the county manager. I worked with him at the Department of Finance Administration when he was General Counsel. I've known him professionally for over 20 years. I truly believe that the decision that was made was not to offend or to hurt anyone. There's not a mean bone in Mr. Schaefer's body. I attended the school board meeting on this same issue, and I spoke up against the fact that they were trying to prohibit Fiesta Council from going into schools. I feel strongly that this is a historical community event, and that we should not lose the importance of the value. We just saluted our flag. I want to remind everyone that the phrase includes "perfect friendship among united cultures." Let's not forget our Hispanic culture, and I truly believe it's up to the county to develop a policy that includes all cultures and historic events. I personally believe that investigation is a waste of time. I think this is a policy issue, not a mismanagement issue. I think we can all learn from this, and I think it's time to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you all for your hard work that you do. My name is Renee Borrego, and I too worked with Greg for many years, and I agree with Debbie that I don't think Greg in any way was malicious or unkind, because, like I said, I worked with him. My concern is that this is Santa Fe. I mean, I was so impressed with your opening and honoring people from this area, and speaking of the Tewas, and this is our community, and if we start changing it or allowing these changes, then what do we have? It's going to be another city, town, county that means nothing. So I also agree, instead of continuing kicking the can down the road, just do an ordinance, do a proclamation, do a resolution, whatever it takes, just so that this does not happen again. It's not, it's not put in the hands of an individual, it's put in the hands of the Commission, the governing body, the people who make these decisions. Because I don't know where this came about, but I was born and raised here, and I know what it was like. I've partaked in, participated in the fiestas. I've been to the schools, I've been to the public offices. It's not offensive. So I would really ask that you just take control of the situation, do an ordinance, do whatever it takes that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, members of the County Commission, my name is Daniel Ortiz. I am a 14th-generation Hispano. I'm also a direct descendant of Don Ashiano Vihil, along with my primo Virgil, who was the second territorial governor of New Mexico, who also was instrumental in implementing the Treaty of Guadalupe-Hilago, which ended the Mexican-American War, which recognized the pueblos and tribes that we have in New Mexico today in their territory, and for which they still today in federal court use. I'm also here in the capacity as the founder and the executive director of the Hispanic Anti-Defamation Association, which is founded here in Santa Fe to defend Hispanic history, culture, and faith from Hispanophobia and the Black Legend. Now, many of you are not aware of the Black Legend. I'm not going to go into it here. I just suggest, and I hope that you will Google it, learn more about what this Black Legend is, because this Black Legend unfortunately has come to Santa Fe. Regarding Mr. Schaefer's actions, you all received a letter from our organization. And let me just say this: You'll probably find no one more serious or more pro-law and order than myself. Now, I realize that a fig leaf of a policy was used, and it was a fig leaf, to defend Mr. Schaefer's actions. Let's be clear: How you implement a law or a policy, the letter of a law also has to come along with the spirit of the law for which that spirit was intended. And I think in the spirit of this policy, there was a breach, for no other reason than the Fiesta visits have been going on for decades. At the last minute, Mr. Schaefer decides to implement this policy with no prior knowledge or foresight. So I'm here not to mete out any kind of revenge, I just want to suggest two possible remedies. First and foremost, I would like to see, on behalf of our organization and the community, Mr. Schaefer, or Schaefer, I hope I pronounced that correctly, issue a sincere apology. Not a half-assed apology that says, "I'm sorry you are offended," but a sincere apology. Or resign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the County Commission, my name is Joe Sandoval. I'm born and raised here in Santa Fe. I'm not going to continue on with what everybody said about the locking out of the Fiesta Council. I was very angry when I read about it, and I'm not going to reiterate what's already being said, but one of the things about the Fiesta Council, or the fiestas, before it was brought downtown, it was a small ceremony behind the cathedral. The Merchants Association of Santa Fe decided that, "Oh, why don't we move it to the plaza and make it a better thing?" So it was commercialized. The Fiesta Council works hard to perpetuate the traditions, but also to get people involved. Their involvement, coming downtown, spending money... Their involvement coming downtown, spending money adds to the GRT of the county, which having people come into the county building and getting them excited and ready to go, it makes them want to come downtown and take part in the festivities. After last... Not this year, last year's incident on the last Sunday, we need such things. We need to energize people to continue to take part, to continue to come downtown and to continue to spend. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kieran Hill. This is going to be very short and... I'm actually moved here four years ago, so I don't have the past that a lot of the previous speakers do. But my comments are regarding the closing of the Fiesta Court, that government is supposed to serve the people and not rule the people, and that a bureaucrat shutting down a popular event on a whim is unacceptable and unbecoming of a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Bustamante, county commissioners, county manager Schaefer. My name is Jennifer Richardson Garcia de Romero. Twenty years ago, I served as an ambassador of our city as la reina de Santa Fe. And today I come here not as a county employee, but as a community member. And I would ask that the commissioners consider, like Renee mentioned earlier, a policy or a change to what's current to allow our Santa Fe Fiesta Council and the members of the Santa Fe Fiesta Council and those who participate as volunteers, including the Fiesta Queen, the princesses, the entire court, and de Vargas, to enter into our building. Twenty years ago, I remember standing here in front of the commissioners at the time, being recognized, and it was something very special, not only to me, but to all that participated. And I know that county manager Schaefer, the intent of the change that happened wasn't something that was his directly. And I know that he didn't mean harm in that. I appreciate the fact that he called me to explain the reasoning behind it. Thank you. And again, I just would like for you to consider everything that's been said today and consider making the change, the change that's necessary so that this doesn't happen again. Because until you participate in our Fiesta, you don't... Nobody understands it until you do that. And it's something, again, that's very special, that's very meaningful. And in 1712, there was a proclamation that was made by our governing body, by the city council, to honor a promise, and a promise that continues till this day. And if we don't continue it, it will die. Thank you.
Thank you.
When I started this, good afternoon. My name is Harry Montoya, here to just kind of echo what everyone has already said regarding the importance of the fiestas. As a former Santa Fe County Commissioner, it was something that we looked forward to. The employees looked forward to every year, and it was a special time of the year. You know, the employees who... Most of you know that the backbone of the operation of Santa Fe County continue to be and have been for as long as I can remember, appreciate the brief time and moment that they have to essentially celebrate the fiestas that are beginning at that time of the year. So please do not get rid of this tradition. It was something that I looked forward to as a commissioner and participating in. And it's just an important part of our culture, our traditions, and we need to keep what we've got before someone takes it away from us. So I'm just speaking in support of continuing that tradition that we've long held here in Santa Fe County. Gracias.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? If not, do we have anyone online?
Chair Bustamante, we have Chris Michelle's online.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Michelle.
Good morning, Chair and members of the commission. Well, this is interesting listening to this testimony. But I want to raise two issues, and I'll try to be brief. First issue I raise is, thank you for moving the public concerns up to the first part of the meeting. I would suggest, though, that you probably need to have the people in the chamber also sign up to speak because else you get an uncontrolled situation. So I would suggest that in the future you get people to sign up to speak. The other... And the other thing I would want to raise to you is, it's very important to have moved this to the beginning of the meeting because of law's public input early enough that it can possibly influence the later agenda items. That's very important. This was intended, and it is by law what you should have been doing all along, because it's consistent with the rules of order, which govern your meetings. And that is a law, and it dates back to 2009. You have been ignoring it, and I would look forward to you to implement it fully because what you have now is you are not adhering to the full rule of law, rule of order that you have. And furthermore, you've got some boards and commissions who are also governed by this, and they're in total chaos. So it is a great idea what you've done so far, but please proceed and do a more full implementation of the rules of order. The original rules of order were violated in 2012 under Liz Stefanics and Miller. They just sort of walked over, got away with it. It actually is on the books, and they were out of line when they violated it in 2012. The other thing I would raise to you is this issue over the Fiesta. I happen to believe that manager Schaefer was correct legally, but I don't think he was correct when he implemented it because... But I think he was correct in that manner that I think the law is consistent with his position. However, his position is based upon the Code of Conduct, which is a very unfortunate bit of law, which was written back in 2010, which needs to be revisited because it really does, is it gives the county manager way too much power over the commission. So I would say this needs to be revisited. As part of this, I hope it is, and it needs some major changes. Getting an independent council, I applaud. It's far overdue because today you're getting very poor legal advice from the county manager and the council or the county attorneys. So what happens is the commission gets confused because they keep getting all this bad legal advice. If you need... I could suggest a couple of attorneys who could deal with this independently, if that would be helpful. But I think really you need to get legal because right now, today, you, the board, and the county manager are in violation of the OMA Act, the EPR Act, the Sunshine Act, and the Rules of Order. Please, get on this. You need to clean up your act and get legal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our matters of public concern. Moving on to the agenda of approval of meeting minutes. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding the meeting minutes from the August 26, 2025 meeting?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second?
A second, that, please.
We have a second from Commissioner Kakari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting minutes have been approved. Moving on, consideration of commissioner proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and other items. Request approval of a proclamation proclaiming September 30th as Espanola Centennial Day. Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's great to see Ms... I will address you as Counselor Benavides in your role right now, but also a wonderful employee of Santa Fe County. It's great to have double duty here. She's going to be sharing the stage with me and here. But we also have... We had Eric Luhon, who was the former city manager for Espanola. And we have the current city manager, Brand New. She still doesn't even have business cards. Lauren, I'm going to butcher your last name, I'm sorry. Reichelt. Excellent, thank you. He whispered in my ear. It was perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. But we have a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary, the Centennial Day for the city of Espanola. I am honored to represent a portion of Espanola as part of District One. It has been a great experience to get to know even deeper and build deeper ties to the community up there and work with the mayor, the city council, the neighborhoods on the east side of Espanola, go on the radio up there. It's a great community. If you don't know it, you should go up there more than you do and spend some money up there because it helps their economy. But this month was their 100th anniversary, and it seems odd that it's only their 100th anniversary, but they were only incorporated in 1925, but they've been around for centuries longer than that. And this proclamation has a little bit in there. Denise and I are going to... Counselor Benavides and I are going to share this proclamation. May I proceed? Are we ready? Is there any comments?
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So proclamation declaring that September 30th, 2025, as Espanola Centennial Day. Whereas the city of Espanola, located in the heart of northern New Mexico, was officially incorporated in 1925 and will celebrate its 100th anniversary in September 25. And whereas the community of Espanola holds a deep historical, cultural, and ancestral significance with roots extending back centuries as one of the earliest European settlements is what is now the United States and as a vital center of pueblo and Hispano heritage. And whereas the Espanola Valley is home to the confluence of three rivers, the Rio Grande, the Chama, and the Santa Cruz River, whose water have nourished the land and sustained generations of residents, farmers, and communities. And whereas the region includes the ancestral homelands of the Santa Cruz Pueblo and the Ocahuingay Pueblo, whose histories, traditions, and governance continue to shape and enrich the cultural fabric of the area. And whereas the site of present-day Espanola once was the home of San Gabriel, the first capital of Nuevo Mexico, established by the Spanish colonizers in 1598 near Ocahuingay Pueblo, marking it as a place of immense historical importance to the state's founding. And whereas Espanola has played the crucial role as the cultural, economic, and civic development of northern New Mexico, serving as a hub for the arts, agriculture, education, and community resilience. And
Whereas the city of Espanola lies within both Rio Grande County and Santa Fe County, with a portion of the city located in Santa Fe County's Commission District One and continues to be a valued part of the county's diverse and vibrant community. And whereas the residents, leaders, and institutions of Espanola have contributed greatly to the region's progress over the past century, exemplifying unity, perseverance, and pride. And whereas the year 2025 marks a momentous milestone, the city's 100th anniversary, and presents an opportunity for all who live and around Espanola to reflect on the past, celebrate the present, and look forward to a bright and promising future. Now, therefore, be resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, do hereby proclaim the 30th day of September 2025 as Espanola Centennial Day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I move to approve this? We can have comments and...
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Green. I worked there for a long time, so I really would be so proud to second that motion. Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. This is great. I have the opportunity to go to Espanola once a month for the board meeting of the North Central Regional Transit District, and it's been a great opportunity to really get to know the city. I do want to note that Santa Clara Pueblo wasn't recognized, and it says Santa Cruz, so maybe we can adjust that.
Yes.
Because Santa Cruz is a community. Makes sense why this just got transposed a little awkwardly, but if that could be corrected for the final version, I think that'd be appropriate.
Thank you.
But thank you for bringing this up, and thank you, Counselor Benavides.
Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Green, for putting this forward. And Counselor Benavides, thank you for your leadership. I think Espanola has a lot of rich traditions. That's a game changer, has been a lot of our historical roots and connections to Santa Fe. My first job was in Espanola. I lived and worked up there in outreach mental health for Vista Social Mental Health Services in the early 90s. And it's really grown as a hub. It's become the hub and also sister community of Santa Fe. So I'm really honored that we are acknowledging Espanola today, the people of Espanola today, and the history and the positive assets and cultural benefits that you make to our northern New Mexico. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Yeah, I love Espanola, too. I visit Espanola all the time, and I appreciate the historical significance of it. It's more historical than Santa Fe. Santa Fe is growing and modernizing, but Espanola maintains the traditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, commissioners, Commissioner Green. We, the citizens, and myself, as your counterpart, I am the city council for District Three, Santa Fe County, and I really want to thank you for bringing this proclamation forward. We are a very proud city. We're extremely cultural, as you know, and please come over and spend more money.
Thank you, Counselor. And I have to also acknowledge the new city manager, who was working with the state of New Mexico, but I met Lauren Reichelt many years ago when she was doing public health and drug substance abuse outreach in Rio Riba. And I have to say, it was one of those, when you came on the show, it's, okay, let's see what she can get done. And years later, it has... You have made strides while you were doing that. So they're very lucky to have you as their county manager. So we're grateful sincerely. So that being said, we have our motion, we have our second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for catching that. We will reprint it before we sign it.
Thank you.
I signed it.
But no, I think that was the...
I signed the second page.
That was the other one. So the next one, the one that we signed, is the request approval of a proclamation proclaiming September 23rd as Office of the Santa Fe Assessor Day, presented by Commissioner Camila Bustamante. And I am so proud to bring this forth because our assessor's office is a national rock star. And sincerely, the opportunity that had... And I knew this before I became a commissioner and came and, you know, interfaced with the assessor's office. But I've said this before, the Santa Fe County Assessor's Office really is exemplary in their outreach and community service, their customer service. They're working with people in understanding their concerns about why the assessment of their land has changed. I got the... I had the opportunity, and I got to drive around with the assessor's office and a community member who wanted to point out everything in the area and why his... You know, why he had a case for his assessment. And I will say the professionalism, the kindness at a time when it would be, this is interesting. I am so grateful for being able to work with the Santa Fe County Assessor's Office. I'm going to read the... So the proclamation is because, once again, they have national recognition. And I will read this. Whereas the Office of the Santa Fe County Assessor is once again in the national spotlight as the International Association of Assessing Officers has... I'm sorry, I said national. It says international. Wow. Has officially recertified the Office of the County Assessor with prestigious Certificate of Excellence in Assessment Administration. And whereas the recertification has presented during the special awards ceremony at the 2025 Annual Conference held September 23rd in Orlando, Florida. And whereas, originally awarded in 2019, this rigorous designation is granted to jurisdictions that meet the highest standards of professional assessment practices, where Santa Fe County remains the only county in New Mexico to hold this certification and one of 62 jurisdictions in the United States to achieve it. Whereas the CEAA, the Certificate of Excellence Assessment Administration, is based on a comprehensive, peer-reviewed self-assessment, highlighting their dedication to continual improvement, transparency, transparency, and professionalism. And whereas the recertification is added to a growing list of awards for the Office of the County Assessor, including the 2016 IAIO Public Information Program Award, the 2017 Thompson Reuters Public Sector Champion Jurisdiction Award, the original acceptance of the 2019 IAIO Certificate of Excellence in Administration Award, the 2022 twenty twenty-two IAIO Distinguished Assessment Jurisdiction of the Year Award, and the most recent accomplishment in twenty twenty-four, the ACE Award for Excellence in Community Service from the Amentum Technologies. So I will make the motion, so I can be the, therefore let it be resolved. Do we have a second for the motion?
I will second. He can do it.
Okay, we have, we have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, do hereby proclaim the twenty-third day of September of Office as the, of the Sound, Santa Fe County Assessor's Day, approved, adopted, and passed on this thirtieth day of September twenty twenty-five. And I would really like to hear from both of you about your commitment and what this means to you. Thank you.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, just thinking about being in the office for twenty-five years now in September, going through the different administrations, and just thinking about how thankful I am to be able to have that experience to work with the assessors in the past and the employees in the past, right? I didn't only learn from assessors, but other employees that I worked with every day, so I want to make sure that they're remembered, right? And, and that they're not forgotten about, that the work that they've done to get us to this point isn't forgotten, and we are appreciative of that. But it takes a current office now and employees that really care about their job, who are passionate about their work. And when people are passionate, right, sometimes you're like, oh, I don't agree with that, I don't agree with that. But I, but I like that, right? I'd rather hear from someone's opinion, and even if they disagree with me, than to never hear about it. And I feel like our office is in that place, right? We're, we're not in an office that is perfect. We're an office that, as you continue to try to strive to be better, you find ways that you, you weren't aware of that you need to get better. And we're seeing that every day. However, I feel like our office and every, and the employees within the office meet that every day. They meet that standard that was met by the assessors in years past every day. So to the, to the employees in the, in the office, I'm grateful, and I'm thankful. We're here because of them. And I'd like Ivan to, if you wouldn't mind, to speak a little bit about the process and, and what it took to get this award.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, I too, am like Isaiah, very thankful for the team that we have. We all bring a lot to the table every day, but we cannot do it without this staff. And a lot of our staff members are here. We're excited to take a picture because this is a big deal. We're extremely excited. The process is, is very detailed. There were, we had a team, you know, that we put together to put, to, you know, do this submission, and it was very grueling, but they are trying to see if we're operating at a national and international best practice. And, and we, we met the challenge, and, you know, again, I could, we could not do this without the team that we have, and so we're extremely thankful for, for the recognition, and thank you guys for recognizing us.
Did you get a grade, right, as well?
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember. I'm on the spot.
Ninety-three percent.
Okay, ninety-three percent is what our grade was. So, yeah, we're very thankful.
Let's have a round of applause for Are you ready for a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to stay perfectly still, all right? Ready, one, two, three. Again, one, two, three.
Wonderful. Okay, and our last resolution, resolution opposing the rescission of the roadless area conservation rule. We have had a number of resolutions to protect our public lands, and currently, anything and everything we can put forward, again, the roadless rule helps keep the vehicles out and maintains the natural quality of the environment. So at this time, I'm really grateful to have Commissioner Johnson to co-sponsor this with me. I don't necessarily think we need to read the whole thing, but we do know that we have a hundred and eight thousand of uninventoried roadless areas in the Pecos Wilderness alone. So this is a very important proclamation in the interest of assuring that where vehicles don't go, if we're going to encroach on those environs, then we would walk into those environs, and we would hike, and it makes that beautiful as well. So anything that you would like to say, Commissioner?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for including me on this. You know, roadless rules are important buffer zones. We can, we use our national forests for many different resources, and that important ecology stretches fifty-eight million acres in our backyard, the National Forest. The, the roadless rule, as Commissioner Bustamante said, prevents there from being the kind of intrusive development that can damage ecosystems, that can create even new areas where people just sort of go and explore, and we want to preserve those for posterity. So it's troubling to see at the federal level the notion of rescinding the roadless rule. It's an important protection that we have, one that sometimes goes unnoticed. So I want to thank you for championing this, and I think it's an important thing that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, roadless roads keep me out of there, so it's a nice little space when you get to actually hike into a spot where there aren't vehicles. And I, I think that that is a, a good protection to keep the resources and keep wildlife safe and to, you know, just add that buffer. And I think that the federal government's rash acts of, of damage to our environment are not well thought out, and I think this resolution is, is a great idea to put our stake in the ground and, and tell, tell the government what we think. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, also, it's just important to have wide areas that are nature, so it can breathe for us, like the trees and all that. We can't take over all of the earth for our use. We have to leave some of it to nature, and this is great.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Just want to thank you, Chair Bustamante, and Commissioner Johnson, for putting this forth and also sending it to our federal representatives. I think it's important that we take a local voice in protecting the naturaleza and our environment, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
I'll second it.
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution number, please?
Madam Chair, that resolution number is twenty twenty-five dash one zero zero.
Dash one zero zero. Thank you. Okay. We are done with our presentations, I mean, not presentations, we're moving on to our presentations. I see the presenters in the room. How could we do that to them? Shaking their heads, we're not done. They haven't started. So I'm grateful that Manager Schaefer recommended moving this. We are going to allow for the full time of the presentation regarding the PFAS characterization in the La Cienega and La Cieneguía areas. And Travis Soderquist and Intera are here, as well as the work that Shelley Muller has really been doing with the community in assuring that people were present, understand what this means. I see and know that she gets a lot of questions a lot of the time, and that's a bit of an understatement. I couldn't actually quantify it for you, but I, I know that she's been very busy. So the reason that this presentation also is going to take precedence, if you will, is because this is something that the county supported with state funds in the interest of assuring that we can take the right steps in moving forward in the protection of this community. So it's a very, it would be an understatement to say important presentation, but it's very informative, and there are next steps that would need to be taken. So at this time, I'd like to ask our Intera representatives, those who are presenting, to come forth and start your presentation. Thank you.
And Chair Bustamante, as our Intera colleagues get set up, I also wanted to recognize that the New Mexico Environment Department, which is the funding agency for Intera's work, is represented here today in the form of Eric Chapman, who is NMED's science coordinator. So I wanted to acknowledge his presence and the ongoing support of NMED. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and I think it's very important to reiterate the support that we are getting from the state of New Mexico. And when this report came out, the state of New Mexico has made it clear that this has risen to a level of importance that is comparable to Clovis, and we will take steps to assure that the community members have the protections that they need. So please move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here before you today. My name is Karen Flotis. I'm a geologist and environmental project manager with Intera Incorporated. I'll introduce some of my colleagues who are here today, but first I want to take an opportunity to say thank you to Santa Fe County for supporting this work, for understanding the importance that, knowing where PFAS contamination is in the La Cienega and La Cieneguía communities, and understanding the effect that has on the community and the importance of this work. I'd also like to thank the city of Santa Fe for sharing some of their PFAS reporting and sampling that they've done, and I'd also like to especially thank the communities of La Cienega and La Cieneguía. They welcomed us into their community, onto their properties, and into their homes so that we could do some of this sampling. The presentation that we'll deliver today was given to the Cieneguía and Cienega communities on September eighteenth. It will be a slightly abbreviated version, because we do tend to talk as scientists, so I will try to keep it tight for you all today. So first, I'd like to thank Brian Snyder, Travis Soderquist, and Shelley Muller for their support through Santa Fe County. And then I'd like to take a moment to introduce Joe Tracy, who is a project manager for this work, Joe Gallimore, who you'll hear from later, who is one of our technical experts, Dan Haddock, who supports the remediation and mitigation side of this. And my name is Karen Flotis again. And then, not here today, but joining us for, as part of this project, is Mr. Steve Finch with John Shoemaker and Associates. Next, I want to outline our project goal, and that's to understand the magnitude and extent of PFAS impacts in La Cienega and La Cieneguía, and evaluate potential PFAS sources. So what we'll talk about today is our sampling strategy, discuss the PFAS distribution within the community, a little bit about the hydrogeology of the area, discuss the source analysis that we've used, identify data gaps, and then discuss mitigation and remediation. So first, I want to outline the study area. The study boundary that we're looking at is outlined in kind of a brownish color. That's a little bit difficult to see here, so I apologize for that. It'll be a little bit more apparent in, in the subsequent slides. Next, in green outline is the Aviation Support Facility. That's a branch of the Army National Guard. So for the purposes of this presentation, you'll see it designated as AASF. Next is a kind of a peach outline for the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility Land Application Area, and then a blue outline for the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility itself. And then finally, a kind of reddish-orange outline for the Santa Fe Regional Airport. So when you hear us discussing La Cieneguía, we've used the parcel maps in the northern section to identify the historic, the boundary of La Cieneguía. We recognize that it is a historic community, and we wanted to recognize the extent that we're discussing when we, when we distinguish between La Cieneguía and La Cienega. So first, I want to talk a little bit about our sampling strategy and the factors that informed which wells we did sample within the area. First, we looked at the existing data. So samples collected at the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility and at the Aviation Support Facility and by Santa Fe County. So what you're, the figure that you're looking at here is a groundwater model flow path. It's actually particle tracking. So the particles originate in the vicinity of the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility and the Aviation Support Facility. The pink lines that you see is, is the particle flow, and what you'll notice is that they, they tend to follow the path of the Santa Fe River. So we use this to help guide where we wanted to do additional sampling in order to characterize the aquifer. And when we were identifying wells to be sampled, we, we considered, will that help us, will taking a sample at this well location help us characterize the aquifer, and is it representative of the aquifer itself? And then, of course, we had to have site access in order to sample at these domestic wells. So we did a series of community presentations, as well as an open house, inviting the community to come in, learn more about our project, and offer to have their well sampled. And some, some of the community members have had their well sampled previously, so they, there were also members of the community that shared their sampling data with us. We also executed a door-knocking campaign where we visited over forty homes within Cienega and Cieneguía in order to secure additional access agreements. We've sent probably over, just over a hundred mailings in the community as well to seek additional access agreements. So as a result of those efforts, Intera collected eight surface water samples and thirty-four groundwater samples. We also evaluated groundwater samples from other entities, including the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility, Aviation Support Facility, and Santa Fe County. And then, of course, those, the private well owners who submitted their information as well. So in total, we looked at about ninety samples. I want to emphasize that each sample represents a snapshot in time. So it doesn't tell us what, what was there before and what's going to be there in the future. It gives us one data point. These single data points, especially in taken, taken together, are incredibly important for this evaluation. So next, I want to talk about the aerial extent of, of total PFAS. So what you're seeing right here is a heat map of the total PFAS. That means that we looked at about forty different analytes of PFAS in each well, and then added the, all of those numbers up to get our total PFAS value. This is just one way of looking at and evaluating PFAS in a, in a sample area. But for those of you who may not be familiar with, with heat maps, the red indicates a higher concentration of PFAS, whereas the, the cooler blues and greens indicate a lower concentration of total PFAS. So as you'll know, there is a significant, significantly more PFAS identified in the communities of La Cieneguía than La Cienega. And next, I'm going to show you a figure that identifies the same, shows the same view, however, it's just in a more accessible format for, for those who need to have more distinguished colors. And again, the higher concentrations are indicated by the darker colors, lower concentrations indicated by the lighter colors. Next, I'd like to highlight the MCL exceedances. So that's the maximum, the EPA has designated maximum contaminant levels in drinking water for five different PFAS analytes, as well as a hazard index. So all of the, the color that you see on the map now are all areas where there are exceedances of the EPA's drinking water maximum contaminant levels. So you'll notice that all of the samples that were taken in La Cienega fall under the MCL exceedances. So right now, I'm going to show another slide that just shows the same information in a more color-friendly format. And then finally, I'll move on to highlight the MCL exceedances in the northern portion of La Cieneguía. So of La Cieneguilla. So what you're seeing here again is the exceedances of the MCLs. What you'll notice in the southern portion of the map is that there's a blue oval. That blue oval indicates the localized area within La Cieneguilla where we need additional PFAS analysis to inform our mitigation strategies. There are samples taken bounding that area, but nothing specific in that area, although attempts were made through mailings to acquire sampling data in that area. The other item I wanted to, or I highlight, excuse me, is the orange oval, and that indicates the areas needing PFAS analysis to inform additional mitigation and remediation. We'll continue to talk about these areas that need additional sampling in order for us to understand more about that as we move through a project. So again, for additional accessibility, I'll show this figure. And then, next, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Joe Gallimore, to talk about the hydrogeology of the area.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this very important matter to La Cienega and La Cieneguilla community. I'm going to be following up with what Karen was talking about concerning the extent of contamination, but I want to talk to the third dimension of that extent. And this is a very important and relevant matter, especially because it informs the use of deeper wells as a mitigation measure, and it also will inform any long-term remediation that may need to occur. To know exactly where you need to focus your remediation areas, what depths needs to occur, you need to know what the vertical extent of this contamination is. So that's what I'm going to be talking about now. Before I get into that, I want to talk a little bit about the hydrogeology, because it provides a framework for the vertical extent of the contamination. So the things I want to point out on this slide are, one, is the groundwater flow direction. As Karen mentioned, it's basically from, along the Santa Fe River, from northeast to southwest. So any sources of contamination, we would need to look in those areas in the upstream, upgradient part of that. Another important part of this slide is that there is a divide, and that divide separates the La Cieneguilla from the La Cienega communities, and it explains why the contamination that's been observed in the domestic wells in La Cieneguilla, La Cieneguilla is compartmentalized there, and none occurs in the La Cienega area. There is some contamination there, but the highest concentrations are observed in the La Cieneguilla, and it's because of this groundwater divide that is keeping the contamination over on the northwest side. Also, on this slide, I want to point out that if you look along the Santa Fe River, there's two different reaches of that river. The upper reach, right by the Army Aviation Support Facility and the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility, the Santa Fe River is losing there. So water and any effluent that reaches the river there goes down into the Vado Zone and into the groundwater. Farther downstream, once you get to La Cieneguilla Springs, that water is actually groundwater. So the groundwater is daylighting at that point. So that's an important point that I'll be talking about here in just a little bit. And let's see, I think that is, a couple other things. I'm going to be pointing out some cross-sections here in the next couple of slides, and I want to show you the lines of sections for those cross-sections. First, on the area, on the northeast side, the NS lines that you see, that is a north-south cross-section that will show the area of contamination in the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility, the biosolids area, and also in the Army Aviation Support Facility area. And then later, I'll talk about the hydrogeology and the vertical extent of contamination along the CC prime cross-sections. So now into the vertical extent. Let me unpack a lot of good, all the information that's here, and I also want to say that a lot of the information that you're seeing in these slides were provided by our team member, John Shoemaker and Associates, and a lot of it also comes from the Bureau of Geology. So I want to recognize them as important contributors to this work. So to orient you on this cross-section, first, you're looking east, north is on the left, south is on the right, Santa Fe River is on the north side, the National Guard site, the Army Aviation Support Facility is on the right. The vertical lines that you're seeing within the cross-section, those represent wells that we have collected or others have collected groundwater samples from, and then the red numbers that you see right beside those vertical lines are the total PFAS concentrations of the water samples that were collected from those specific wells. The water table in this region is that dash blue line with a blue triangle sitting on top that's basically at 6,150 feet above sea level. The sea level, the elevation is on the Y-axis on the left side. And also important to point out in this slide are the two different geologic formations that provide water to the domestic wells in the La Cieneguilla area. The yellowish area with the label QT ASR, that's the Ancha Formation. The Ancha Formation is more permeable. It provides most of the water for the wells that are screened within both of these two units. The second unit, the lower unit, the TTS, the brown unit, is the Tasuke Formation. It also provides water, but it's not nearly as permeable as the Ancha Formation above. Also in this cross-section, there's a clay layer that you see over on the right side that extends to the center part of the cross-section, in between MW1 and MW6. That is a perching unit that is taking, that has perched groundwater, that's migrating through the Vado Zone, through the subsurface, and has accumulated on top of this clay layer, which is basically impermeable. And that is important because, as you see, on the right side where you see A01, A01, 01, and 04, those are wells at the guard site. 527, the 788, those are total concentrations of PFAS. Those are the highest concentrations of PFAS that have been observed in this study. And they're caught up, they're perched on this clay zone that I just identified. The working hypothesis is that that contamination may migrate, may come off of that perching zone and get into the regional aquifer, which is what we're thinking is happening at MW1, which is actually in the biosolids area, and that contamination is affecting the regional aquifer. And another thing I want to point out in this particular slide, the screen intervals for the wells that are identified on this cross-section are very small, are very discreet in depth. And so when we collect a sample from those wells, we know exactly where that water is coming from, and we feel very confident that the concentration that we're getting from those particular samples are representative of that discrete zone. So that's very important, because it's different than the wells that we sampled in the La Cieneguilla subdivision, where they have very long screen intervals, and they have zones that are not necessarily constructed in a way that prohibit groundwater from moving from shallower zones to deeper zones. So these were constructed for one purpose, and that is to get a high-quality, high-quality data from a discrete zone. So what we think is happening here is we have PFAS contamination that's caught up on the perching unit, and you can see the orange that just appeared on the cross-section. Again, those represent the highest concentrations that we've seen, and then we're also seeing PFAS contamination in the regional aquifer that's down below and is illustrated in MW1. So continuing on with the vertical extent discussion, these are two cross-sections. DD prime is along the Santa Fe River, and kind of the same thing. And I want to point out that this is showing the arrows that are coming off the surface down into the groundwater are the losing stretch of the Santa Fe River. So water coming there, effluent coming down that, that stretch of the Santa Fe River are going into the groundwater in that zone. As you get to La Cieneguilla Springs, that groundwater is daylighting. And again, our working hypothesis is that the contamination is in that more permeable Ancha Formation, which is that yellow zone, and the vertical extent, though, is unknown because we don't have discrete interval samples collected in, from the domestic wells in the community. So again, that's important, relevant to this study, because if you want to use a mitigation measure of drilling a deeper well in those communities, we just don't know exactly where that contamination is, and that's a data gap that needs to be filled by additional investigations. But the working idea is probably in that more permeable zone that's illustrated in orange here. And then on the CC prime that goes across that divide that I was referring to, notice that we're compartmentalizing the contamination in the La Cieneguilla area, not, and none in the, at least from these sources, in the La Cienega area. But again, notice the question marks, big data gap. We don't know what the vertical extent is exactly there. We're guessing scientific hypothesis that it's only in the Ancha, but more data is needed to determine that for sure. So that's the vertical extent. Karen talked about the aerial extent and where we have areas within the La Cieneguilla community that warrant mitigation measures. And later in the presentation, Karen's going to talk about some long-term remediation efforts to help solve this problem. But before we can get into any meaningful discussions about long-term remediation, we need to know more about the source. If you're going to remediate something, you need to know where you're focusing your efforts to cut off the source of the contamination. So that's what I want to talk about now. And before I get too far in, I just want to make sure it's clear, our study has not identified one particular source of contamination for the PFAS that's observed in the domestic wells in La Cieneguilla area. There's five different potential sources, and I'll talk about each one of those, present the evidence that supports that being a source, but also I want to present some data that indicates or contradicts why that may not be a source. It's a very complicated situation. Additional investigation data is needed to determine, but I want to share what we know so far. So the potential PFAS sources, and these are sources where we have documentation that there actually is PFAS in the subsurface. And the three sources, potential sources that have documented PFAS are the Army National Guard's Aviation Support Facility, we've already talked about that, that was in the, that cross-section that showed the highest concentrations of PFAS. The, all airports with, that have been operating for any length of time are required to have this aqueous firefighting foam to put out any fires, petroleum-based fires that may exist at their facility. They're there to fight any aircraft fires. They're very effective in putting out those fires. The Army Aviation Support Facility had PFAS, had this A3F for firefighting purposes. This Santa Fe Airport is believed to also have had that, but there's been no investigations there, only because our investigation is only now leading to the need for additional data there. So that's the first potential source, the Army Aviation Support Facility. Also, a potential source is the leachate that's coming from the biosolids that were generated by the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility. And then there's also PFAS documented in the effluent that's coming out of the wastewater from the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility. Those are areas, liquids, that we know we have PFAS, but we don't know if there's a direct link to those documented PFAS concentrations and PFAS presence in the domestic wells in La Cieneguilla. Other potential sources are the septic tanks, actually within the La Cieneguilla subdivision. Waste has PFAS. It's, PFAS is everywhere. So the waste that's being generated and being discharged down the Santa Fe River is documented to have PFAS. Septic tanks likewise have PFAS. Also, and I've mentioned this, the Santa Fe Regional Airport is a likely, is a potential source of PFAS. So the locations of these sources, as Karen mentioned, are, and this is complicating a determination of where the source is coming from, they're all three right there together. The Army Aviation Facility, the biosolids are around that facility, and then we have the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility, that's discharging water also in that geographic area. So that complicates just because all the geographic presence or the geographic location of these facilities are all right there together. So first thing we typically look at when we're trying to determine a source of contamination is we go upgradient from where we're finding the contamination and look for the highest concentrations of PFAS. And in this case, it seems like we found the source. The highest concentrations are at the Army Aviation Support Facility, but it's a little bit more complicated than that. When you look at the actual chemical compounds that are in the groundwater samples, there's some differences between what you see at the support facility and what you're seeing down in the domestic wells that we sampled. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a second. And to try and get at the answers, we did a deep dive statistically, we did some fingerprinting that included statistical analysis of all the different compounds, and I want to show you the results of some of those studies that have led us to where we are now. So the pie graph that's on, that's on the screen now is a, represents the samples that were collected from all the domestic wells within the community. So we took the average of all the concentrations and, from all, from all the samples that were collected, and this pie graph represents those concentrations. And so I want to point out a couple of things here. The blue compounds are what's called carboxalates, and those are typically indicative of a earlier, I'm sorry, later formulation of A3F. The green compounds are more indicative of a later formulation of A3F and are referred to as sulfonates. Now, one particular compound that I want to point out here that complicates the determination of a source is the PFOS. PFOS is very important here because it is a, it has a very low MCL, it's very toxic, but in this case, there's no PFOS at the guard site. There's PFOS in the La Cieneguilla wells, but none at the guard site. So again, we've got supporting information, supporting data that points to the guard, but then we have information that contradicts. So to the right, this pie graph that I just put up is a, another average concentration of samples that occur at the guard site. And again, you can see there's none of that dark green that represents the PFOS. There's sulfonates, there's green, but there's no PFOS. So, but, and there's also a lot of the carboxalates, the blue compounds. So similarities between the two sample sets, but then the differences. And as Karen mentioned, there's, this is a snapshot in time. So we wanted to go back and look, it's like, well, what about other sites that have done more extensive and a lot more sampling through time of what the PFAS concentrations look like and how those ratios compare? And that's what this graph is. So there's the big things that are, you can see here, the representative graph from other airports, there is PFOS, but not at the ratio that we're seeing at La Cieneguilla. There's also a yellow compound here that are precursors, the 62 FTS, and we're not seeing a lot of that in the, either at the airport or at the Air National Guard site or in the La Cieneguilla. So again, similarities, but some differences that need to be explained. So the next potential source, the La Cieneguilla, the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility, and here's that same representative pie graph of the sample collected from the La Cieneguilla domestic wells. And then here's a sample that was collected of the effluent that And then here's a sample that was collected of the effluent that is being discharged from the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility. The most obvious difference that you see here is there's no green compounds, right? There's all blue, there's all carboxalates. So there's the same compounds, the same carboxolate compounds in La Cienega and some of the same ratios, but we're not seeing any of the sulfonates there. So there's a difference there. Again, since that's a snapshot in time, this one particular sample from the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility was collected, I think, in 2020. So we went back at other sites to see what may be different. And here there is some in this representative graph, there are some sulfonates. This looks a little bit more like what we're seeing in the La Cienega domestic wells, but there are some differences. Notice that the PFOS and the La Cienega samples are higher in in relative proportions than what we're seeing in this representative graph. And again, it should be noted that this representative graph is also indicative of what you typically see in septic systems. So finally, the the third potential source where there's documentation of PFAS contamination is the biosolids area. Again, here's the La Cienega representative graph, and then here is a sample that's collected from MW1, which is right in the biosolids area. Similarities here, the ratios look very similar, the blues to the greens look very similar between the two. But again, no PFOS or very little PFOS in MW1, a lot more in the domestic well samples. Representative of other sites, similar kind of situation, very little PFOS, but still that same ratio of carboxalates to sulfonates, the blues to green. So in summary, a lot of similarities that support each source, but there are some contradictions that need to be addressed. So in summary, our conceptual model and that explains how contamination may have gotten from any one of these sources to the domestic wells in La Cienega is illustrated in this block diagram. So first, there could be leachate coming from the biosolids that are the leachate of PFAS in the biosolids and soils right below that percolates down through the subsurface, gets into groundwater, groundwater flow toward La Cienega and is in the wells there. Another possible source is the the PFAS that's in the perch zone at the Army Aviation Support Facility. Again, that could migrate off the perch zone into the regional aquifer, flows down down gradient into the domestic wells. Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility has effluent that's being discharged to a losing stretch of the Santa Fe River that can percolate down into the subsurface and into groundwater affecting the domestic wells. Also, there during storm events, the surface soils, which I failed to mention, there is PFOS in the biosolids area, in the soils, shallow soils, and also in shallow soils at the aviation facility. That stormwater could pick up the PFAS, the PFOS, and through transport away from the facility into drainages into the Santa Fe River, which is losing, and then into groundwater, another potential source that needs to be addressed. The septic systems are scattered throughout every place that there's a domestic well, there's also a septic system. That could be a source of the PFAS. So a very complicated system here, and more work is needed to determine exactly what's going on. And then there's also the unknown sources, you know, the Santa Fe Airport, and I've already mentioned the septic systems. So I'll let give it back to Karen, and she can talk about the data gaps that are currently existing.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, we've spoken to many of these data gaps. What's important to understand is that some of these data gaps will affect mitigation, remediation, or both, and some of them don't necessarily have an effect on either. However, it is important to understand where we don't the data that we don't know about yet or the data that we don't have yet. So the first one Joe touched on, and that's construction of the wells in La Cienega. No wells that we sampled were exactly the same. They have different depths, they have different construction intervals, they have different screen intervals. So that prevents us from getting a sample that we understand to be an exact characterization of the aquifer at that zone. So understanding and being able to differentiate between the deeper wells and the Ancha between the Tassukei Formation and the Ancha Formation, as Joe was mentioning, will be really important for mitigation. The second is the extent of PFAS in the southwest area of La Cienega, and that's that blue oval that I mentioned towards the beginning of of our talk. Next is the extent of PFAS west of the Santa Fe River. There are not many wells west of the Santa Fe River. We have identified one that we're working with BLM to potentially sample, but there's just there's just not a lot to be sampled in that region. Another data gap is the extent of PFAS in the Santa Fe River. The you'll see kind of a yellow area, yellow circle to the southernmost extent of the Santa Fe River that was sampled. So additional sampling can be done to further characterize the extent of PFAS in the river. The extent of the perching unit at the Aviation Support Facility, as as Joe mentioned quite a few times, understanding where that perching zone ends and what happens to the water after that perching zone will be very important for remediation. The leaching potential of PFAS in the soils will be a very important, Vado Zone modeling can be done, and that would affect the mitigation and remediation measures that were taken in the area. Finally, sort of second, sorry, not finally, source identification is incredibly important as we've seen throughout this study and we've identified, there's a significant data gap between the Aviation Support Facility and the La Cienega community. Understanding what's going on in that in-between zone will be incredibly important for remediation further down the line. As I mentioned, we've done initial, we've done single sampling at most of these locations. So it's represents a snapshot in time. In order to understand how PFAS is moving through the system, we would want to do subsequent monitoring of a subset of wells within the area. And then to speak a little bit to the mitigation and remediation, the guiding principles for understanding and for providing long-term mitigation options is to look at the most sustainable, effective, affordable, and the options that are consistent with community planning. So at this time, I'll go back one slide just to show you the total, this again is showing the total PFAS within the area. And so of the study area, there are about 1,800 parcels. There are about 650 parcels that have any kind of PFAS contamination in the in the wells that we sampled. Of those 650, there are 169 parcels that have exceedances in the maximum contaminant levels for drinking water standards. Now, it's important to not equate necessarily parcels with residents or with the number of homes affected, as those can can be different for numerous reasons. And while point-of-use systems are really a great idea for remediation for mitigation in the short term, they don't necessarily represent the best options for for long-term remediation. So unfortunately, the long-term mitigation and remediation options depend heavily on characterization and source identification, which we don't have at this time. So again, filling in those data gaps, understanding that the data that we do have is a snapshot in time will help us get to those long-term, long-term source identifications and characterizations that will help inform mitigation and remediation options. So the issues that are associated with long-term point-of-use treatments include that it's not tailored to a site-specific, the solutions don't provide a site-specific characterization or solution. The granulated activated carbon or ion exchange remediation options require rigorous maintenance to maintain, and they can even get so saturated that they can produce a a falloff effect. So releasing significant amounts of PFAS, if not frequently changed out. Another option for short-term remediation is a reverse osmosis. However, this produces a significant waste stream that tends to go into the septic system, which, as we've discussed, septic systems can be a source of of PFAS in the groundwater. So addressing the data gaps that we've identified will help to help to identify the path forward for mitigation or remediation that will get us to a place where we can actually assign cost estimates and and understand the positives and negatives of different remediation and mitigation measures. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, thank you all sincerely. Questions from the board, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you. That was very, very informative. I have a couple of questions. So there is this mystery of the PFOS. Where does this, where do you typically find this kind of compound?
It can be in several different sources. Probably the most well-known source is in what's referred to as legacy A triple F, that aqueous film-forming foam that are found at airports and at the DOD facilities. You know, for example, the contamination at Cannon Air Force Base that has lots of press, that the predominant compound that's affecting those wells is PFOS, and it's from the A triple F that was used to fight crashes that occurred and also the training that occurs at airports. So that's the PFOS is very indicative of this legacy A triple F. Later in time, like in, I think, the two around 2000, as PFOS was starting to be recognized as a very toxic substance, compound, they changed the formulation of A triple F. And so the PFOS was taken out, and the the more those blue compounds, the carboxalates, are more predominant. And you don't see any of the PFOS, you don't see the PFOWA, which is also a very toxic compound. So the most likely source is a A triple F. But there's also, it's also seen in septic, so effluent is seen in wastewater effluent. And complicating the picture here that I didn't didn't mention, and this is, we need to get confirmation of this, but in one of the reports that the guard had, there was documentation, interviews that suggested that during the testing of their firefighting foam procedures, the wastewater from those tests were went through the oil water separator and eventually ended up into the city's septic system, which went to the Paseo Real Water Reclamation Facility. So it's a very complicated, twisted kind of source determination. So that's, but those are the, that's the predominant.
Thank you. So would so 25 years ago, wouldn't would one expect to find PFOS at the Air National Guard Support Facility?
Not, not necessarily. You know, they changed formulations, so that's a fairly old facility. So they may have used a earlier legacy formulation before they went to the newer formulation. But the fact that we're not seeing PFOS in the perch zone is is hard to explain. But the fact that we're seeing PFOS in the soil samples right at the surface suggests that maybe there was a legacy foam being used at that facility. And that's one of the main reasons that we're including the stormwater runoff as a possible source of taking that downstream and in into the Santa Fe River.
Okay, so as as PFAS in general accumulates, and maybe it doesn't work this way across all of the different compounds, but there are they flushed out or pushed downstream? Or is there, I'm not trying to solve the mystery, I'm more just trying to understand the hydrogeology of of this, because we do have a mystery here, which is it's quite interesting, I mean, and tragic, that we have this accumulation of one that is quite toxic, they're all toxic, but I think you get my gist.
Yes.
So is there a flushing mechanism? I mean, does it accumulate in ways that sort of slips it down over time? I just, I think a little bit of help understanding that process would be great.
Sure, yeah. Great, great question, Commissioner Johnson. So you're absolutely right. So as the compounds are released, the PFAS is released, it accumulates, and not to get too technical, but typically it accumulates at air-water interfaces. And the longer the chain of the compound, the more sticky it is, so the more it likes to stick to clays that have water in them, and so it doesn't go farther down and and to may not reach groundwater. And that's kind of what we're seeing in the soil profile at the biosolids and at the guard is, you know, those stickier compounds are more concentrated at the surface, you don't see so much as you go deeper, right? The compounds, the PFAS compounds that you are seeing are the shorter chain, and those are typically more soluble, so they get into groundwater more readily and and get flushed out, as you refer to it, in the in the Vado Zone and end up in groundwater. So getting back to this mystery, why are we seeing the PFOS that sticks typically and is not in groundwater at the source areas, the biosolids, Army Aviation Support Facility, but we see it down gradient? And it may be because of that, we don't know where the water is coming off of the perch zone and into groundwater, and we don't know if there was actually a stormwater transport mechanism. So that's the gap. Those are the the data that's needed to try and basically connect the dots from those three primary sources or potential sources down to the domestic wells. As Karen was showing, you know, there's that big area at the on the Santa Fe Airport property where there's just no data, and we need to, we need to get some there.
Okay.
Does that help?
That's very helpful. It's a puzzle, and I thank you for your expertise. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I just wondered, are you going to continue this work? And how much longer, how much more detail are you going to get for us, since it's all a mystery now?
I guess short answer is, we hope so. I mean, there, you know, it's the whole idea of what we're, the objective of what we're trying to do is figure out ways to, for a long-term solution, right? You know, we've identified some methods, mitigation methods for point-of-use kind of treatment, but that those are all short-term. To get at a longer-term solution, it there, there needs to be additional investigation work, and, you know, there needs to be wells, we've got to get access to lands. We've been very fortunate in what we've done so far with the community support, getting access, but now we need to get access in that those data gap areas so we can continue this, these investigations.
But you don't have funding for that yet, or what?
That's a question that I should probably.
I think he's asking us.
What? Well, that's what I want to know. How much money do you want?
How much money do we want? Wow. You know, I think at this point, we need to, we need to really figure out exactly where the wells need to go, because the wells, and I don't know if you recall in that cross-section, but as you get closer to the Santa Fe River and farther down gradient, the depth of groundwater is is it's not as great. But if we're investigating up by the Santa Fe Airport, depth of water is, you know, 150, 200 feet. So the wells that we installed, that need to be installed there are going to be more expensive, and we need to to determine that that 3D, that vertical extent, part of the problem. We not only need to have screens that are right in the Ancha, but we need screens that are set below that to see if the vertical extent goes down into the Tassukei, which will then inform some mitigation measures about can we drill deeper wells and get clean water?
Okay. And Brian?
Madam Chairs and Commissioner Hughes, I would just add that, as you're aware, we've received about a million and a half dollars from NMD as a funding source, about ballpark number, half a million dollars going to the effort that we're underway with. So that funding will be used towards filling the gaps and next steps to identify additional needs, and along with that, we'll get tightened down as to what is needed for maybe future next steps and and costs associated with that. So also. So also during our conversations with NMED, they've offered additional funding and support to help as we move into what I call a remediation stage. And so there's, there's, there's dialogue going on with NMED as well as, you know, our team internally to figure out next steps as well as then, you know, put an action plan into place.
Thank you, that was the answer to my question I was looking for.
Brian, I, I can't, before you walk away, thank you enough. And I think it's really important, again, I can't say enough, only because there is a lot of criticism about this happening at all, but the leadership in this county to take care of this. And I really, you know, your willingness, the manager working with you and to just get a lead on it, we are not the source, Santa Fe County is not the source of this contamination. And you have moved fast and you're already thinking ahead into what we need to do. So I, I'm going to speak for those who don't know that you all are the ones lead, taking a big lead. And I'm grateful for this commission for having supported that. But thank you for the work that's being done. That, that is an effort, thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, you're welcome, but it's a, and it's a team. The team, part of the team's here, we also branch out in community services. Part of it's public relations and communication that Shelley Muller is leading as well as, I'll call it the science behind it. So it's, it's truly a team effort and, and that's part of what we're here to do and get our arms around what this challenge is.
Teams do well with the lead, thank you for you. Commissioner Kakar Stone?
Yeah, I want to thank you for your research and the expertise of the team. Most of my questions are just around, what can we do in translating the science of what you found now to the daily application of the community residents at La Cienega, La Cieneguía? Based on what you found now, even though there's six sources they could be from, what could be, I know you say have some short-term measures, but what's being done to translate what you have found into the just everyday rhetoric and practices? I see there's some mitigation efforts here, but what else can be done?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I'll speak briefly to that and just say that we have delivered this presentation to the communities of La Cienega and La Cieneguía. Shelley Muller has offered her support as well. For every well that we sampled, we sent their sampling results to them and sent contact information for follow-up questions as well. The Santa Fe County PFAS website has additional information. And then at that community meeting, NMED had a presence there as well where they shared additional resources. So we continue to be out in front of the community, you know, speaking to this issue.
Thank you so much, Karen. Can the county invest in any of this equipment that's needed for short-term solutions? How are community members using, what can be done to mitigate it on a daily basis? And where do they order these equipment, how do they get them? You know, I think the, getting the 411 to community in the way they need it now, because I went to that large before I came on that forum at the Community College and people just wanted clean drinking water now. And it's already been almost a year, so what can be done?
From being in the community, many of the community members have invested in their own point-of-use treatment sources or treatment mitigation measures. And so there were a lot of homes that we, where we spoke to the community members where they said that they had something installed to support that or were, were bringing in drinking water themselves.
So is it quite expensive? Is this something, as we think about investments, where we could do, like we do with rain barrels? But this is just, people need to get this, so what could we do and how much does it cost?
The, the technologies range and price, as you might expect, and it, this is kind of where I was talking about, it's not specialized to a specific concentration of PFAS. So you, you could purchase a filter of some kind, but if you're in an area that is, has significant contamination, you're going to have to replace your filter a lot more frequently than a person who has a, maybe is just in slight exceedance of an MCL. And so it really depends on where you are. The mitigation measures do vary quite a bit. From my understanding, there has been support through Santa Fe County for, for utilizing some of these remediation options. And having the supportive, of, the financial support from the county as well.
And is there technology that's more advanced and more expensive that could help mitigate or protect against the PFOS?
There are not mitigation measures that target specific analytes that I'm aware of. It's usually for a full kind of range of PFAS.
Specific one that can be...
If you can speak to the microphone because this is recorded, that's okay.
There's not a specific filter that targets the PFOS and PFOA. So, you know, the, the longer-term solutions, as we mentioned, are going to be remediation at the source so we can keep the content, the groundwater from continuing to get contaminated. And then look at alternate water sources, maybe to bring into the community that is monitored frequently to make sure that there is no PFAS in, in that water. So that's a, that's an option too, very, very expensive one, but one that is being evaluated.
I appreciate both of your knowledge and the team's expertise. I'm very interested in seeing a proposal that helps us support the short-term solutions while we're still studying, especially freshwater sources and the, the most advanced technology that people could use in their homes and how we could help support that or partially support it. So my other question is, is the behavior of the PFAS contaminant, contaminants as well as the various sources, are there other studies where you can do a comparative analysis to look at similar behaviors and similar sources and come up with potential estimations of solutions?
Can you repeat that again?
Yeah, are there other studies where you can do comparative analysis in terms of the findings they, they have on similar sources of the six and potential solutions and analysis that they found? So in other words, we may be here with the study, but there could be some studies out here that you can do comparative that wouldn't really cost that much, except for looking at published literature and talking to the scientists.
Understood, thank you, Commissioner Stone. And, and we, we've looked at a lot of comparative analysis and in those pie charts that I was showing, you know, we, we did the representative ratio of compounds from different sources and different studies. And, you know, there's a lot of similarities unfortunately between the, the different sources. And so differentiation is, is going to be tough. We've done very, as I mentioned, this principal component analysis study that, that also recognizes similarities and, and chemical composition. And, you know, some things popped out from that, but nothing definitive. So until that gap in between the airport and the community gets filled, it's going to be tough to do those kind of comparative analysis. I think that's the exact right approach. You know, once we get the data that's in that data gap area, I think we can, that'd be a more informative method at that point. But right now is, is, there's too many questions because those sources are so close in geography to, to one another. And then I mentioned how they're even more connected with the effluent from the testing at the Guard site that may have gone to the Sale Real Water Treatment Facility. So there, there's all these connections that, that are occurring and it's going to be hard to differentiate. But there, there, once we get a little, little bit more information in that data gap area, I think we can start teasing the mystery apart.
Well, I appreciate your research and I know you can't answer this or do anything about it, but I guess as a BCC and then having gone to the Town Hall that Commissioner Bustamante helped facilitate and organize, you know, it seems like we need to come up, there's the sources that are historical, but what are the current existing sources and the, the repetitive offenders? And how can we address that from a policy working intergovernmentally with the feds? I know that some folks from the National Guard didn't show up at that, that meeting. There seems to be a diffusion of not taking responsibility. And I appreciate the county's trying to take responsibility for a solution. But if there's the usual suspects that keep contaminating, I think we have to look at the source of the contamination currently as well. And I don't know how we go about that, but I just want to put that out for public speech and for the record that we really need to come together again and have a serious talk across intergovernmental agencies.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I want to say, the issue of the wastewater treatment facility has long been an environmental, why am I all of a sudden forget, justice issue? It's been a long concern. In 1968, we were told we couldn't play in the Santa Fe River anymore. So when we talk about re-offenders and how we would do this intergovernmentally, the one thing that I'm very grateful for from both the state, well, from our secretary, is that those entities would be held accountable. And, you know, it goes all the way, there are a number of community groups who are working to communicate, get these issues resolved. But these are longstanding, nobody lived there. Have been the answers for the airport and the wastewater treatment facility. And these are very old villages that go downstream to pueblos. So I think it's really an environmental justice issue. I feel it's important when we're putting things on the record to acknowledge that as we continue to find the sources and hold the culprits accountable. Next, Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if we can go, maybe no pun intended, or maybe pun intended, upstream, as it may be, with, when we look at those biosolid fields, do those accumulate in the soils? Because that to me would be, you know, yes, it leaches into the groundwater through rainfall and things like that. But, you know, when they're sprinkling, whatever that is, biosolids, that's a polite term, can we go there and sort of sample and do like some core samples of, you know, 10 feet deep, five feet deep? So there's something there to sort of see if there's something in there?
Good question, Commissioner Green. And, and that work has occurred. The city has taken it upon themselves to collect samples of the biosolid itself and the soils directly underneath. And they've had those soils and biosolids analyzed and there, there is PFAS in those samples. And the more sticky compounds that I mentioned, the PFOS is present there. And so, and then the, there's also some of the shorter-chain compounds that are in the groundwater in the one well, monitor well one below. So, you know, those could be continuing sources of PFAS in, in groundwater. So that work has been done. The, how much leaching potential still exists in those biosolids is a question that needs to be answered, and Karen talked about that in the data gaps. And my understanding is they're no longer putting biosolids in those areas. So, you know, that, that source, the primary source has been mitigated, but the soils and the biosolids existing are still a potential source of leaching of water as it rains and percolates down into groundwater.
Great. And then testing of septic leach fields, like in those general areas, is that another place to try to, you know, not digging hundreds of feet into the ground, but actually just taking soil samples in leach fields?
Not a pleasant proposition, but yes, it is, it is something that we've talked about doing and I think needs, needs to occur to see exactly what kind of contribution the septic systems themselves are causing. But, you know, something we didn't point out, the, the La Cieneguía area, which has PFAS contamination, but not to the degree of La Cieneguía, they all have septic systems also. So you can maybe draw a conclusion from that, that the septic systems are not a major contributor to the PFAS. But there's some hydrogeologic conditions that are a little bit different between the two that may also be causing a difference. So you're, you're right on with your idea that, that there does need to be some sampling of the leach field effluent to see how much of a contribution, how much mass may be coming from that source.
Great, thank you, very interesting information. Interesting conclusions, even though if they aren't complete at this point, it's an interesting thing to see that the biosolids are not right directly underneath. That doesn't seem to have contributed, although who knows? It could be running off and doing all sorts of other ways of contributing. And then the airports or the, the National Guard facility, training facility had, you know, a lot of one thing, but not the other, really, really head-scratching. So, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry for the interruption. The, there are a few more other things that I want to make sure that we state and I, I'm again grateful that the county's on it, that we're working this. The communication is interesting and I know that Shelley hired about a year ago now, close to a year, we've done door-to-door, we had community members, they have community groups that go door-to-door, and we still meet people who didn't know. And, you know, short of stopping every car at all intersections, I don't know what else can be done. But in that regard, in getting out this information and in getting out the recommendations, I mean, early on, the county had examples of the different types of filtrations at the table. I, I think that communication early and often is really crucial. Information cards, you know, hard copy. Not everyone, especially in these older villages, are on the internet. And I did meet some elders at the state fair, believe it or not. And I said, "Oh, La Cieneguía, did you get your well tested?" And they said, "For what? Why would we?" And they were elders and it was sort of disheartening. I'm like, "We went toward a door everywhere." So there might be some doors we don't know about. But it's, it's very important that we continue to communicate, get the, get the word to people and continue to provide the support that we've been able to provide and now extend that support based on other factors. The HRE has been a support to the community in making sure that people who were, who qualified could get filtration, get their water sampled, et cetera. And now we know that, and per the secretary, and I don't believe I misheard him, but there may or may not be, so it wasn't conclusive, an opportunity to reimburse individuals who've spent money on filtration systems. So it wasn't conclusive, but it was stated, we would look into that, okay? Are there any further statements? I want to thank you all very, very much and everyone who's been working on this effort. Almost, it's been a year in November, so thank you all very much. Thank you. I, you're free to go. And we're going to take a 15-minute break. Thank you all. Commissioner Johnson, they don't have peppercorn steak anymore? that the commissioners would like pooled for discussion at all?
Like to move to approve it?
If not, I will have a motion to approve.
I think he moved.
You did?
And I'll second.
Sorry.
And then I seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson, a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone. The consent agenda has passed. May I have a resolution?
Right, get a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, motion passes. The agenda, this time, the consent agenda really has passed, been approved. We need some resolution numbers, please.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see. Item 6A is 2025-101. 6B is 2025-102. 6C is 2025-103. 6D is 2025-104. 6E is 2025-105. And then 6M is 2025-106.
Thank you. So that would be 101 through 106. All right, appointments and reappointments. We have none. Miscellaneous action items. Our first action item to hear today will be resolution requesting a budget increase in various funds to carry forward to the 2025 encumbrance balances. And this will be Yvonne Nereda. Hi, Commissioner Black.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, good night. Let's start all over.
Good afternoon, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Chief Black.
Uh, I'm here today to request your approval for the Santa Fe County, or for Santa Fe County to enter into an agreement with BRICS to implement a non-audible alerting system for the Santa Fe County Fire Department. As you know, firefighters, uh, and first responders face many well-recognized hazards in the line of duty. One lesser-known, yet significant risk is the impact of loud audible alerting tones to responders' cardiac health. To address this concern, the Fire Department, working in partnership with the Purchasing Division, conducted a cooperative price, or cooperative request for proposal, uh, in which BRICS was selected as the vendor that best met our needs. A key component of their proposal was the ability to design customized alerting solutions for each of our staffed stations. Their system replaces traditional loud tones with a combination of lights, message boards, and vibrating devices to alert responders to, uh, to incoming emergencies. These features can be tailored to individual stations and crews, ensuring responders receive timely and effective notification without harmful cardiac stress caused by audible alarms. This approach is not theoretical, as it's already been implemented successfully across, in fire stations across the nation. Non-audible alerts have proven effective in notifying responders, even waking responders via lights and vibrating bed frames when an emergency occurs. At this time, I respectfully request your approval of the agreement with BRICS to provide non-audible alerting to the Santa Fe County Fire Department. Thank you for your consideration, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief Black. Do we have any questions for the chief?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kukari Stone. Do we have a second?
Right here.
We have a second from Commissioner Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item C, request approval of lease agreement 2025-0156-PW between Santa Fe County and the Pueblo of Pawke for use of land operation of Pawke Fire Station 50.
Good afternoon again, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Chief Black.
The Fire Department is here with Public Works requesting for your approval, uh, for a long-term land lease for the continued use and improvements at Pawke's Fire Station 50 at 1791 US 84285. Uh, we first entered into a lease, uh, in 1999 with an expiration date of, uh, 2039, so a forty-year lease. Uh, that posed a number of challenges for the Fire Department, specifically in regards to the use of expending fire, fire funds. Fire funds as a restricted funding source is intended for the operations of the Fire Department, uh, allocated by the State Fire Marshal's Office. One of those restrictions is that we have to own the property, uh, or have a long-term lease. So things that we have not been able to expend fire funds on that we've needed are parking lot improvements, stucco updates, roof, uh, roof, uh, repairs. And by extending this lease, it will allow, it will meet the State Fire Marshal's Office requirements to serve as a long-term lease agreement, allowing us to leverage fire funds to continue, uh, continued operations out of that fire station. Now regarding specific, specifics of the lease, I'll turn that over to Ashley.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Um, this is my first time presenting, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Ashley Sisneros. I work with Public Works, I'm the real property specialist. Um, we've been working on the lease to renegotiate with Pawke, the Pueblo of Pawke. It currently expires in 2039, and as Chief Black mentioned, it does not meet the requirements to access the state fire protection funds. So we've renegotiated the lease with them to extend through 2074 at a continued lease rate of one dollar per year, and with an option to renew for another forty-nine years. So with this long-term lease, we'll be able to access the state fire funds to make improvements needed to the fire station.
Thank you, Ashley. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Green?
Uh, less of a question, but just to thank you, um, for your persistence on this. It's, um, I want to give a shout-out to you all, but also to Pawke Pueblo for, uh, changing the way that they do business and making it, uh, possible to do a long-term lease. These are complicated, for those of you that don't know, you have to go to the BIA, and that they've done a lot of work to sort of simplify it and make it so they can have long-term leases. It's helping their own economic development, and now is, in this case, it's helping, uh, our public safety up in the north, so it's wonderful, uh, to see that. So great job, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, is Santa Fe County responsible for the maintenance of that facility, or is the fire, uh, is the Pueblo of Pawke?
Chair Bustamante, Commissioner Johnson, uh, the Fire Department is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that facility.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve item C, an approval of lease, uh, number 2025-0156-PW between the Santa Fe County and Pueblo of Pawke.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item C has been approved. Item D, request approval of lease agreement 2026-0024-PW between Santa Fe County and the Santa Fe Recovery Center.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Alex Dominguez, Santa Fe, um, I forgot my department, Community Services Department Behavioral Health Program Manager. Um, the Community Services Department with the Public Works Department request approval of lease agreement number 2026-0024PW between Santa Fe County and the Santa Fe Recovery Center Incorporated for continued use of the premises located at 2052 South Galistale Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico. Upon approval, the Public Works Department will submit the lease to the State Board of Finance for final authorization. On December ninth, 2024, the county renewed its services with Santa Fe Recovery under Services Agreement Number 2024-0257-CSD/MB, which now requires a corresponding premises lease. The proposed lease agreement number 2026-0024PW will extend Santa Fe Recovery's tenancy through August thirtieth, 2029, with two additional four-year renewal options, each tied to renewal of the Services Agreement and subject to market rent reappraisal and State Board of Finance approval. Uh, Miss Sisneros is now going to share a little bit more information regarding the lease, starting right there.
So the Board of Finance does, sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the Board of Finance does require us to, um, get a new market rent appraisal every four years. We have gotten this appraisal done, and the new market rent is thirteen thousand, seven hundred and three dollars per month, which is payable with in-kind services such as client care and behavioral health trainings, and any shortfall can be paid in cash. They do report to us quarterly, so we can, um, show the amounts owed, and that is it. We stand for any questions?
Do we have any, uh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, Mr. Alan Pabella is here with me, he is with Santa Fe Recovery Center, he's the, uh, Facilities Director, and of course, Miss Sisneros with Public Works to answer any questions regarding the lease and myself for services. We ask, we ask that the Commission kindly approve lease agreement number 2026-0024PW with Santa Fe Recovery Center and authorize the Public Works Department to submit the lease to the State Board of Finance for approval.
Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? Commissioner Green?
Uh, just one, thank you for the work that you do over at the Recovery Center, thank you for making this, uh, viable for the community and, uh, getting an in-kind sort of, uh, trade in this thing. I do find it interesting that the, uh, the value of the lease went down, so anyway, that's a weird note, um, but besides that, I'll make a motion when anybody's ready.
Do we have any further questions? We have a motion.
I'll make the motion to, uh, request approval of the lease number 2026-0024-PW between Santa Fe County and the Recovery Center.
I second.
We have a commo- we have a motion from Commissioner Green, we have a commotion between Commissioner.
I tried to get it in before her.
He was louder.
Could we please pause so that we can play back the tape to see who actually? Could you please step aside so they can arm wrestle? Okay.
She can have it.
We'll go ahead with a, uh, seconded by Commissioner Kukari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Item E, request approval of easement agreement number 2026-0069-A-PW, quick claim deed and agreement number 2026-069-PW with the Santa Fe Opera for planning, design, and construction and operation of potable water holding tanks at the Santa Fe Opera. Thank you, Mr. Hart?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is, uh, so the agreement, the easement, as well as the, uh, the quick clean, claim deed, uh, provides us the means to act as a fiscal agent for the Opera to utilize their, uh, legislative outlay, uh, to reconstruct or actually to construct a new tank to replace their aging tank that they have. This will more than double the size and provide adequate fire protection. Stand for any questions?
Thank you. Michelle, did you have any statements or anything you wanted to say about it?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. Just, I was just here to answer any questions regarding the actual legal documents. Uh, the easement is kind of key as we go forward, because it will provide the county to have access to the Opera property for maintenance of the water line between the new fire hydrant and the new tanks.
That's very good to know, thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the lease between this, the, um, Opera, or the quick claim deed between the Opera and the Santa Fe County.
We have a motion to approve?
Second?
By Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, resolution number 2025, authorizing county manager to delegate signature and certification authority to the Public Works Department Director for notice of intent and notice of termination for approved county construction projects.
Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, thank you for not having to read off all the acronyms I packed into that resolution title. Um, uh, my name is Michael Carr, I'm the Environmental Compliance Officer with Public Works. Per the resolution title, uh, we're just requesting delegation of signature authority from the county manager, uh, to the Public Works Department Director, um, for those notice of intent, notice of termination, um, just to hopefully alleviate some of the administrative burden of processing those EPA-required documents from Public Works through the CMO. Um, as you all know, the county has been working diligently to meet, um, our stormwater and MS4 management responsibilities over the last several years. Um, this resolution represents an effort.
On F.
One of the many tasks.
Someone is eating.
I have backup, apparently.
I'm sorry.
Uh, but yes, so, kind of these efforts that we've been moving towards over the last several years have included, um, a lot of cross-department collaborations, uh, monthly staff meetings, consolidation of stormwater-related documentation, development of policy asset matter, uh, mapping and more. Um, so the passing of this resolution will support those efforts and the process we're currently moving through to make sure that we're on top of all of our stormwater requirements. Um, with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Do we have any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion from Commissioner Johnson?
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, a resolution number, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-108.
108, thank you. Item F, resolution adopting the local government's road improvement fund projects, number L500615 for pavement, pavement rehabilitation improvements of Santa Cruz Lake Road and Encantado Loop. Ryan Ward.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. Um, if it's, if it's, uh, acceptable to the Commission, I'll, uh, address item G, H, and I, is there all LGRF grants, very similar?
Attorney Boyd, is that, um, allowed if we hear the presentation and then approve each independently?
Chair, it's certainly allowed for, uh, Mr. Ward to give a presentation on, on each item, uh, in sequence, and then for you all to act, uh, on all three items in, in sequence as well. I think creating a record, uh, of each approval was probably appropriate, rather than approving all three in one motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, to give a quick, brief overview, yearly, we do a local government road fund, uh, grant request, uh, we work through NMDOT through the state. Um, this is typically, um, something that Public Works submits yearly, um, and so our match is seventy-five, or the state's match is seventy-five percent, the county match is twenty-five percent. Typically, those funds, uh, for our match are out of our road maintenance, um, budget, and they're typically, um, asked to be expended within eighteen months, just as, as a background. Uh, there are, um, extensions, uh, and we've used those in the past at times when we've needed those for materials or other items. Um, to give you just a quick, brief background, um, I, I know we've shared a little bit about how we score roads now. Uh, IMS, who was our contractor, has, has gone through the county on all of our paved roads, scored those, and so this year was one of the first years we had the data in hand, and so, um, what our goal was is to try to identify the roads, we try to stay around a, a pavement condition index score of seventy. And so, um, what we focused on was chip seal roads typically, and asphalt overlay type of projects, anything that needs to be reconstructed is a project, so, so those move over to our Public Works Projects Group and, and are funded separately, uh, just to give you a little bit of background on that. Um, also, um, the roads that we typically look at for salvaging or improving, their typical scores are between fifty and eighty, and typically, a seal coat will move them up around ninety, high eighties, uh, and that's what we're kind of targeting, any kind of asphalt overlay improves it, you know, ninety-five percent of, of, you know, bringing us back close to a hundred, so, uh, that's just a little bit of background on that. The first LGRF, which is item G, um, is Santa Cruz Lake Road and Encantado Loop. Uh, the beginning project point for Santa Cruz Road is Camino La Sotea, and then the end of the project is the actual lake parking lot. Encantado Loop, the beginning of the project is Avenida Azul, and the end of the project is Avenida Azul where it loops around. Um, that's this item, and I would like to note, there is a correction for, um, exhibit C, so the beginning points, and, and I apologize, didn't catch that, but in exhibit C of the agreement with the state, the actual point of beginning is in there instead of the actual road name, so we'll, we'll have that corrected, but I wanted to note that. Are there any questions on?
Do we have any questions for Ryan Ward? Uh, Commissioner Hughes?
You, um, and I understand you'll probably complete Encantado Loop before you pave Encantado Road, is that right?
So Encantado Loop, I hope that's the case, so we're working out there now, this year, we're doing, um, Frasco Road, and there's one more road in that area, um, but I think that's, hopefully that will be the, the goal. But this, these, these are typical, uh, projects that we do for maintenance, so the LGRF's typically tied to that, not necessarily doing new roads, even though at times we do do that with the LGRF funds, which is typically a based road that we come back and seal coat to improve.
Yeah, just, we'll have to explain to the people who live on Encantado Road why we're doing Encantado Loop first.
Yeah, it should be Encantado, it should be Encantado Road, I believe.
No, I think you're doing Encantado Loop, because.
Yeah, Encantado Loop, I apologize. Yeah, from Avenida Azul to how Avenida Azul loops.
Yeah, because it's already paved, so you're just repaving it.
Right.
All right.
Improving it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seems like a good question that Commissioner Hughes has asked, the, the neighbors are gonna, are not gonna like that.
Right.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hughes, a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that's for item G?
Item G?
Yep.
Yes, Chair?
Item G has been approved, um, can we have a resolution number for item G?
Uh, yes, uh, eight G is 2025-109.
Okay, item H, are there any questions regarding item H?
In item H, for clarification, is White Lakes Road, uh, which is in District Three, uh, from New Mexico Forty-One, um, to the, uh, basically six-mile north point from Forty-One, so.
It's out there.
That road, we've done quite a bit of work over the years, so it gets a lot of truck traffic, for sure, so.
Definitely does. Um, I'll motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bustamante, we have a second from Commissioner Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item H, resolution number? Item H, resolution number?
Yes, ma'am, it's 2025-110.
Thank you. Item I, for Apache Plume and Caydebra.
Correct. Apache Plume from Nine Mile Road to the State Cattle Guard, and then Caydebra from Camino, uh, Lisa to County Road Fifty-Six are the two roads that have been identified, both chip seal roads.
Um, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Johnson. We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Item I has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number, please? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Madam Chair, that resolution number is 2025-111.
Thank you. Item J, request approval to utilize the design-build-project-delivery method to provide engineering, design, and construction services for the expansion of the Santa Fe County Water Reclamation Facility. Hey, Bill.
Good afternoon, uh, Chair Bustamante, Commissioners. Um, this request is, uh, being presented to the board, uh, pursuant to our procurement, um, regulations and policies, uh, when using this project delivery method is design-build. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions regarding that procurement method. It's different from your traditional design-bid-build, and so that's what this is presented, but more importantly is the project, and it's to build, to design and build an improvement of the reclamation facility for, to meet the current capacity, to expand on the current capacity, uh, for point five million per day, and eventually be able to be expanded to two-point-oh. And with, we have Michael Hart from Public Works answering questions regarding the project itself.
Do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Green.
Uh, thank you. Um, do we have an owner's rep with technical, uh, knowledge that can help us to check the math on the engineering?
Uh, no, we don't intend to, to hire a, an owner's rep, but the, uh, this will be a fixed-price, uh, contract, so it won't be a progressive. This is a, uh, it's an RFP for engineering qualifications for a design-build team, followed up by a fixed-price proposal, so they'll be held to those numbers.
Okay, do we feel like we have internal technical expertise of knowledge of more or less what we should be asking for and what the specifications and processes are?
Uh, yes, we do. So this is, uh, the original plant was built through a design-build process. This is an expansion to a million from a half million on this particular phase. Uh, the, the design and the systems are going to be identical to what's already in place, so this is not new technology, it's a repl, it's an expansion of existing technology.
It's just a Phase Two of something?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
Any further questions?
I'll make the motion to approve, then.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item K, a request for approval of Agreement 2026-0091-PW with Amigos Bravos for monetary donation to accept money for groundwater sampling related to PFAS, completed by Intera.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So this is a two-part presentation. The first one is an agreement between Santa Fe County and Amigos Bravos. Um, Amigos Bravos, if you don't know, is a nonprofit organization who, um, was given twelve thousand dollars to pursue additional sampling, um, in the Los Yenegia area for PFAS contamination. And so this agreement is just the county accepting that. Uh, the second part is the amendment to the original agreement that Santa Fe County had with Intera to, um, take that money and incorporate that additional sampling into the plan that we had with Intera. Stand for any questions?
Do we have any questions for Travis? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve this, thanks to Amigos Bravos.
We have a motion to approve, um, from Commissioner Johnson, a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Commissioner Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Um, item L, request approval of memorandum of understanding between Santa Fe County and the Office of Secretary of State for costs incurred in the administration of the 2025 regular local election. Rosa Angela and Jennifer Wilson.
So Rosa Angela was here, and she took a phone call, so. You've got this, Jennifer, we know it, you've got this. It's easier when I'm sitting down over there, it's harder standing. Um, so hi, I am Jennifer Wilson, I am the Deputy Clerk with the County Clerk's Office, and this is my co-deputy, Rosa Angela Ortiz, over the Bureau of Elections. And we're here today to request approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Santa Fe County Clerk's Office and the Secretary of State for costs incurred in the administration of the 2025 regular local election. Um, so the amount of the MOU this year is, uh, about seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. The Secretary of State's office came up with this calculation based on expenses, authorized expenses from prior elections, and there is a breakdown in the MOU itself of what they estimate the cost to be, and the vast majority of the costs are, um, payroll-related, or our temporary staff that we bring onboard in order to administer the elections. Um, okay. So, um, with that, we recommend that you approved, um, the memorandum of understanding between the Santa Fe County Clerk's Office and the Secretary of State, and we stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for the Clerk's Office? Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Wilson and, uh, Rosa, appreciate your work. Um, this is an estimate from the, uh, Secretary of State. Do you guys do detailed budget analysis based on actual costs of each election and where the money goes? And I'm just curious, how does it compare to what the Secretary of State is estimating?
Um, so the costs that are on here are the, the authorized costs that they'll reimburse us for. Um, the next item on the agenda is the bar related to these costs, and with that item, we have a little accounting of items that aren't covered by the MOU, and so combined, that's the total amount, um, that we expect to spend in administering, uh, the regular local election this year.
Okay, I guess I have a spoiler alert, I'll wait for the next item. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'm just gonna abstain from this, uh, as I am a party to this election.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Johnson, a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Kukari Stone. We have an abstention from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item. How is it that when I open up the attachment, I lose where I was? Hold on, here we are. All right, uh, request for approval of memorandum of understanding, wait, wait, sorry, resolution, this is a resolution, right? We're already in them. Uh, requesting a budget increase to the General Fund 101 for the costs incurred in the administration of the 2025 regular local election. Thank you.
So thank you very much. So this bar is to budget, uh, the amount being allotted to us via the MOU from the SOS. Um, so as previously mentioned, the, uh, expected amount that, that they'll be reimbursing us is seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. Um, in addition to that, um, we did an analysis of, um, additional amounts that will be funded out of the general fund and are not covered, um, by the, um, MOU, just so that together with the MOU and this amount, this is the total amount that we'll spend administering the election. Um, so the FY26 budget already has, um, about four-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars in it that was previously approved, um, for non-reimbursable expenses. Um, we gave a breakdown of about four-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, um, that we expect to spend out of that amount, and, uh, so with that, unless you have any questions, we ask that you approve the budget adjustment resolution to authorize the seven-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars in reimbursable funds for the 2025 regular local election.
Any questions? Matters, concerns?
I will be abstaining again. I move to approve, then. Item M, a resolution requesting a budget adjust increase to the general fund for the costs incurred in administration of the 2025 regular local election.
We have a motion, or we have a question?
Yeah, that was kind of, sorry.
I apologize.
Well, you can ask a question after I make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, we can have a discussion. So we have a motion, but I think we have to have a second and then you can ask. We have a motion from Commissioner Hughes, a second from Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Kukari Stone.
Yeah, thank you both. Could you just kind of walk us through the, uh, budget number three and then the county clerk's regular local elections? Are those, um, amounts below in the smaller budget sheet, the four-twenty-four embedded in the seven-nineteen? Could you explain a little bit more how you're breaking this out?
Right. So the, uh, the four-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand that's detailed there, those are the amounts that are not covered by the MOU. So the county is funding that, and that's part of the budget that's already been approved for FY26.
Okay, so we're, we're not, you're just showing us that we're not just, we're not approving this additional amount, we're just approving the drawdown and draw-through of the seven-nineteen through this act?
That's correct. It, it was asked of us that we provide a bigger picture, like a whole picture, of what our expenditures are, so we wanted to show that in addition to what is covered by the MOU, these other costs will also be spent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, more, any further discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, that is it for our, um, agenda of the miscellaneous action items. Here we go.
There is a resolution number associated with that?
Yes, oh, of course. Are you gonna go sit down?
Yeah. Oh, I can get it from here. Twenty-two-five-one-one-two.
One-one-two, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Um, on to matters from the county manager.
Uh, thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Uh, the one miscellaneous update that I have, uh, for the board, uh, concerns a request for proposals, uh, that has been issued by the State Department of Workforce Solutions for new affordable and attainable housing construction, pre-development infrastructure, and, uh, site readiness. Uh, so this is a, uh, competitive procurement process, uh, in support of, um, affordable housing, uh, generally. Um, a condition of the, uh, RFP is that, um, proposers, uh, again, developers primarily, uh, have a, um, uh, local public body, uh, that is, quote, "willing and able to serve as the fiscal agent," you know, "for the project." Uh, we have been approached, uh, by, uh, several entities, uh, requesting, uh, that the county act, uh, in that capacity. Um, we are working, uh, both with, uh, those developers as well as with the Department of Workforce Solutions to really flesh out, one, why that requirement exists, uh, since the state can and does, uh, provide affordable housing, uh, support, uh, directly to developments, but, two, e- exactly what is expected, um, would be expected of the county, uh, if acting, uh, in that role. Unfortunately, the deadline for, um, submittal of proposals is October thirteenth, uh, which is before the, uh, next regular meeting, um, of the BCC. So it is possible, uh, that staff may request that the board, um, schedule a special meeting, uh, where we can, uh, fully brief the board on both, uh, the requests that we received, but also our then-current understanding of, uh, what acting in that capacity will mean in terms of, uh, county responsibilities, uh, resource allocation, and, and potential, you know, liability, uh, issues. So, really just a heads-up now that, um, we are working in good faith with those that have approached us, uh, and will continue to do so, uh, but want to make sure that, um, you know, whatever we're potentially, um, agreeing to, um, the board supports, uh, relative, again, to whatever resources are required, as well as, um, you know, whatever liability or responsibilities come along with that. So that's really it for my miscellaneous updates. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Matters from the county commissioners and other elected officials. A commissioner issues comments, including and not limited to constituent concerns. We'll start from Commissioner Green.
Las Shana Tova. Happy New Year, everybody. This is, uh, the Jewish New Year, then we are almost done with it in the next few days. Um, and, uh, just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. I'd like to thank, uh, the folks at Tourism, uh, the Tourism Department and, uh, and all across, uh, I think, New Mexico True for providing a few of us with, uh, wine and chili tickets. Those were great, uh, to see as a, a really great local and tourist, uh, and food culture event. I attended, uh, the grand tasting on Saturday and, uh, and the industry tasting, but I didn't get tickets for that. Uh, I just earned that because I'm in the industry. Um, and, uh, but it's a great event, and it's wonderful. I want to do, I want to give a shout-out to Monica Abada from North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. She is, uh, in her last day today over there and has done amazing work, uh, at North Central to, uh, really rebuild that organization. When she took over, North Central had been in really dire shape, and, um, I had worked with the previous administration, uh, from the outside, and really, uh, it needed Monica, and Monica did the best job ever. Uh, really, I'm sad to see her go, but I'm also, uh, happy for her, so, you know, these are great things. Additionally, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, some of the county staff for working with the Governor's Office, and thanking the Governor's Office to work with the Chupadero Mutual Domestic Water System, uh, for their, uh, collaboration to, uh, both apply for a, uh, a, a grant that is a pretty significant grant that'll, hopefully, we'll hear about sometime next year, uh, and, uh, to, uh, really making this, uh, this mutual domestic, um, we're under, for those that don't know in the room, we have a resolution from two thousand and twelve that says that Santa Fe County, uh, will take over this, uh, mutual domestic once, uh, certain conditions are met, and some of those conditions have become extremely expensive in the last few years. And while we've been doing little, uh, you know, bits and pieces with them, and they've been doing a lot of the heavy lifting, this last bit of lift was, uh, overly significant, and so helping them get this grant in and then helping them administer it is wonderful, and I hope that, uh, we will all remember how collaboration helps, uh, these little communities, and thank you for that. Same thing, uh, very similar, but slightly different for the Cuatro Villas Mutual Domestic up in the Santa Cruz Valley, La Puebla area. They've been needing assistance from, uh, Santa Fe County, and I want to thank staff for, um, really stepping into this. There's, uh, that, that mutual domestic has less capability than Chupadero, and, uh, and we've been stepping in to try to fill in as much as possible. They've needed, uh, potentially emergency funding, they've needed space, they've needed a whole bunch of, uh, technical assistance, and we've pointed them in the right direction and, uh, given them as much assistance as we, uh, as we can, and, uh, I appreciate it, and I'm sure we all do, so here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Hughes?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. First of all, um, I noted, or a friend of mine and I noted that there's nobody feeding everybody, so when Pete's Place was run by the Interface Shelter, anybody could come in and eat. Now they only serve the people staying there, and this is likely to become more of a problem as winter approaches, as there are cuts to SNAP benefits and all sorts of things, so that's just something we should think about, um, because there was a group of churches that cooked, volunteered, they bought the food, everything, for the Interface Shelter, and perhaps they could be recruited to cook for a soup kitchen. and perhaps they could be recruited to cook for a soup kitchen. That's just something that came up this week. I haven't approached the city yet to find out if, you know, they've thought of this, they might provide a space for it. But we should, we should think about that. And I, that's just something to think about, but it's a big thinking. In regard to the housing summit, it was a great summit. I went and I was approached by three groups to serve as their fiscal agent, Lamplighter, Homewise, and the Interface Shelter. I'm not sure what the Interface Shelter, I think they're planning on doing a Resource and Opportunities Center. But I wondered, do we want to set a time for that meeting right now so that, because next week is our only, we'd have to meet next week to meet their deadline. And I assume that we're gonna want to at least, if it's possible, we're gonna help, want to help Lamplighter because we already put $1.9 million in to the Lamplighter project.
Chair Bustamante, Commissioners, really the pleasure of the board. I hate to set a meeting and then determine that additional due diligence is necessary. So I'll be meeting with Leandro tomorrow, who's really been kind of point on that, working with the Community Development Department and will have a better sense of how much time we need to work with the developers. So again, my suggestion would be that, you know, we work on that offline once we know the timing, but if you want to set a straw date now, recognizing that it could change, really that's up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, our schedules are rather, I mean, aren't you thinking we need to meet next week either way? Because then they have to know by Monday, right?
Yeah, so if you're looking at something late in the week, next week, that would be the safest bet. So something, you know, on Friday would probably then meet all of those objectives.
Yeah, so how about August 9th at 2 o'clock? October 9th? I get my months mixed up, at least I didn't put in January this time. I mean, is that a good time? October 9th at 2 o'clock or 1 o'clock or? Thursday at 1 o'clock? Or 2? Yeah, I think 1 o'clock.
Let me see when the, when the investment committee has rescheduled for, for this Thursday. Okay, thank you, thank you. So that was just rescheduled, so I'm good for next Thursday as well.
Thursday at 1 o'clock? Yeah, it would be a very short meeting, I think. You're okay with that time?
I have a conflict, but I can have someone cover the meeting if necessary, or I can work to have someone else cover a different meeting, but we'll make it work.
Okay, so October 9th at 1 o'clock, just as a straw date. And you'll tell us if we need to meet or not. In addition, October 9th, I'm having a town hall to go over projects in El Dorado and we'll cover Encantado Road and other things then. Hopefully that's a peaceful, but it will be, usually we have this every year. I expect this year it will be well attended by pros and cons of AES. But we'll put up with that. And also, just to mention Spur Ranch Road is blocked and so there, gotta consider, I'm working with Ryan on changes to the adoption policy. I saw Walker's memo today, so that's helpful. We'll see how that goes. Also, I just want to mention that West Coachity Road in my district is also approaching us to adopt them because their road is almost impassable. And so, and I imagine you have similar situations in your districts, so I'm gonna work on that with Public Works, try and come up with a slightly different, the current, the plan that we adopted in 2021 is a little bit hard to meet for anybody. I mean, we haven't adopted any roads since then and that seems a little bit tough because the roads, not only are they hard to improve, but they've gotten way, way more expensive. Spur Ranch Road, for example, attempted to pave it themselves, they just couldn't do it. They tried to create a, I think we call it a public improvement district, we tried that, we turned them down for that because it was too expensive. And so the road situation has changed quite a bit. It's really expensive to repair them and fix them. And that's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Thank you Chair Bustamante and everyone. I just want to give a couple of brief updates. I participated in the annual strategic meeting and planning of the Aguafria Water Association and Community Water Association and they're doing tremendous work in terms of having, looking at water rights, connecting people up to their wells and their systems. But I want to mention that they're doing a PFAS study and nobody's left here in the chambers, but I do want to connect them with Brian Snyder to make sure that they're exchanging findings and they wanted to meet with the folks doing the PFAS study. So I appreciate any connection that I can make for them. The Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, I'm on the board. We had a budget meeting, I'd like to announce a positive outcome is that they did receive the federal funding and we approved the budget for this coming year. They're doing well, they're able to have about three or four employees on board. But an announcement and an invitation to all of you that October 25th and October 26th is their Sky Balloon Fiesta at Los Luceros and it's a really exciting event. Everyone's invited to come. I will be volunteering there. There's a 7:00 AM balloon launch on the 25th and an evening event starting at 4:30 on the 25th. And on Sunday is their morning balloon launch at 6:15 AM. Finally, I want to announce that I participated in the Citizenship Day. As we know, our BCC supported that as a proclamation, National Citizenship Day, working with Somosun Pueblo and the city. It was a press release at City Hall and an evening event sponsored by Somosun Pueblo that went really well. And finally, I'll just give some general information. I'd like to thank Commissioner Bustamante, our chair, as well as the county management team. Took initiative as a result of conversations with folks regarding the incident and the conflict at the door with the Santa Fe Fiesta Quadria. We had a two-hour facilitated dialogue with the core Fiesta leadership, with the core county management team. I think it went really well. It doesn't fix everything, but it's a step forward towards healing, understanding. And folks were able to share what, how it impacted them. We heard some of the testimony today. There was hurt, mostly people worried about the next generation. But I want to highlight that in addition, but not in competition to what our BCC is doing with regarding, looking at the codes and policies and an external consultation or investigation with legal. They did recommend that we have, and we agreed that we could move forward and we'll have to bring it to the BCC for a vote. They'd like to have the Tuesday Fiesta Week at 3:00 PM be an official time where we hold a BCC special session. They had clear recommendations and a step moving forward, keeping communication open and timely and us taking a role in working with them to address the larger community distress, which we heard today. I think there was appreciation for honesty, for heartfelt sharing, and I want to just emphasize that media and policies can't fix everything, but sometimes we have to move forward to repair relationships. And public services, public trust, and this was an important step forward in helping to regain some trust. So I want to thank everyone who participated.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like Commissioner Hughes, the rains this year have been thankfully plentiful, but this also affects roads, so it's important that we identify communities, neighborhoods that are impacted by flooding and by deterioration of roads. I'm hearing from Apache Ridge, among others, in my district. And I think simplifying the policy or making it a little bit more straightforward would be a good thing for road adoption. At the Metropolitan, at the NPO, the planning organization, we heard a presentation about Vision Zero, which is a nationwide initiative to reduce pedestrian, actually vehicle fatalities to pedestrians, bikes, et cetera, to zero. And so I will be bringing forth a resolution in the near future. The city did pass a resolution for this, so this is trying to do a little bit of alignment and it's been, we've discussed it as a group before, making those alignments is just a good practice as we share the county. And so we'll be seeing that soon. I had a good conversation with Director Snyder about the solid waste transfer station punch pass system, which I, I've been using a transfer station for many years and the punch card sort of magically appear and I appreciate them, but they're only available in a sort of via mail or in a limited number of hours. And there is, I understand, an initiative underway to do digital point of sale at the transfer stations, which I really heartily approve of because people drive all the way out to wherever their transfer station is and then there's no punch card, they don't have a punch card, they don't know how to get one. So I think that'll really improve and align with our customer service initiative. That's all I have. I did, I did get married on September 13th, so. That's, that took up a lot of my time and thank you for any who have covered for me during that period, but that's all I have. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you Commissioner Johnson. My first item would be an absolute shout out, thank you, couldn't say it enough, to Public Works for meeting with the communities, all of them, who are having road issues after these floods. It has been incredible. And for people to, Ryan Ward to be willing to walk up and down roads with people and looking at the issues and having real discussions about what can and can't be done realistically, but what could be done to mitigate it. So it was very, very good. The next item and issue that keeps coming up and it has been a thought, a question, a request since the first year I was on the commission was to engage with Santa Fe, the city of Santa Fe, about a joint effort towards a wastewater treatment facility. I do believe and really request for the manager's office to evaluate the pros and cons for that joint initiative as there are places near Aguafria, if not Aguafria itself, who don't have wastewater treatment and we've been talking about connecting that as well as apparently the city has since received enough money to be able to do it themselves, but prior to that, they couldn't. They're in conversations with themselves about doing repairs to the existing wastewater treatment facility. I will stand that that has long been an environmental justice issue unless something very positive out of that remediation at that particular site could come up for that community, then it's an environmental justice issue since day one and it would only continue to be so if they were going to continue to send effluent down that is not good for the community. But that being said, I really request that we evaluate the opportunity to have a joint wastewater treatment facility if it's at all plausible. On the same issue of water, there is what was being referred to as a water summit and we often have a water summit. This is to answer the question that I think every single one of us, including the city councilors who I've spoken with of, because we do have, we're doing it now collaboratively with the city of Santa Fe, is where's the water gonna come from? Every time we approve any new developments, the question is, well, where's the water coming from? And this has been very well laid out by a number of volunteers as well as people who work in the state engineer's office, the city of Santa Fe, and our very bright and I'll say hardworking Public Works water folks to really put together an agenda that's meaningful. And I will say it, they dug really deep and I think portions of this event will be recorded so that it is online, so later when people want to access it, it will be noted, you know, what is the fut, like, I don't know, it'll be by the topic, but let's say, you know, what's the current state, what's the future, where is it in future for a hundred years? I don't know, whatever. But the point is, is that will be accessible to community members and that will be broken up accordingly. That is on October 27th and I really hope that all of us can make sure that our communities are aware of it. It will, if we do not do due diligence, honestly, I think this warrants a newspaper art, you know, word out, anything we can do to let people know because these folks worked really hard to bring this together and to have this information to people who ask it every single time. So I'm super grateful for the work that's been done on that and it's on the 27th. And my, they are calling to water summit, my recommendation is, where's the water gonna come from? Next, the, I have to actually say, I went to the most wonderful Edgewood event. They have, and I think it's just worth sharing, that they have something called Edgewood's Got Talent and they have it out at their Venus Park and they had a big place with a microphone and a speaker and people came up and did their talent and it couldn't be sweeter. It was so sweet. So shout out to Edgewood and that good work. But right up the road from them, I have, we have another community in District Three, but it's all of our community, Stanley is tapping out on water. And it's very difficult, I've had some very good conversations with the county manager on how difficult it would be to get that system available if we were, if we were to acquire the water rights that have been well discussed or shared, that there are water rights and potable water that's available from wells in Stanley from Bill King, I understand is the king who's selling those water rights, but to acquire those and to pipe them would be an enormous amount of money. That being said, residents are running out of water, their wells are going dry and they're asking for support and they are a smaller group of people, which is why the amount of money and how many people would be served makes it difficult. But I ask all of us to consider something that they have been very clear on is they want to develop in that area. They want people to do things there, they want to attract business between Stanley and Edgewood. So if we start thinking along those lines with regard to the opportunities where people want more density and development, I think that is a place that's really asking for it. And that's right there by our Cyclone Center, there is an opportunity there. Lastly, let's see, there is a charge currently that I was asked about and it's for consideration, it's $90 a year, which is relatively nominal, but it's also a charge for something that people don't have access to. It's $90 a year if you live proximate to a water line, even if you're not using it. So I had constituents ask me to meet with them and wanted to know why do we pay, and now for a number of years running, $90 if all we're doing is living next to the water line? And the answer is because they would have, and it is in, it is in the policy, and I pulled this up, they get an annual fee, properties that are close have a potential to connect to the Santa Fe County water and they're called standby lots. So the question is, we've been paying a standby fee, but when are we really going to be able to get the water? And that's for them not happening soon enough. How much do they have to contribute to their standby fee before water will be made available? And I think that's something we want to think about and realize that people, you know, are paying for something they don't yet have access to. So that is very important to my, to folks in District Three, but as well as in District Five. The next is the, I will be in Washington DC from the 7th to the 10th. I'm pretty sure no one will be in their offices except our representation because the likelihood of the shutdown seems pretty high, but I will be attending with the HCLC, which is the Hispanic Conservation Leadership Council, which is which is made up of elected officials who work on outdoor conservation issues. And we will be going with the HCLC in a small group with some leadership out of Pecos to really ask for the protection of the public lands and probably say a number of things about the roads work. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to do that, as paid for by the HCLC. And lastly, I do want to, oh, not lastly, the next thing is that there is a cleanup from nine to one on October 4th of the Caja del Rio. So if somebody wants to be out there and help clean, it's always good fun. And then lastly, I do want to thank Commissioner Kakari Stone for the event that she pulled together for the community conversation, as it's clear, there is a lot of emotion behind this. And I think there have been statements that, but this was, you know, built up to be too emotional very early on. I will be honest, I was clearly upset about it, but that wasn't, I wasn't the first person I knew who was upset about it, I'm going to say that. And I think today we've heard more and more and more. But that really started to crack open the dialogue and have people share their issues and concerns. And I think both sides really got something out of it, and I can say that confidently. So I'm grateful for that opportunity to have participated, not really participate, right? We sat and, as Kakari Stone says, held space. But she also says, don't poo-poo the woo-woo. And that was also something I carry with me now. So I held space, and I'm not poo-pooing woo-woo. It was a very, very important afternoon, really. And on that note, in the interest of sharing the status of the, the approval of acquiring external legal support for the evaluation of the events, I think it's heavy-handed to call it investigation, evaluation of the events for recommendations on how to best proceed, as well as how do we, and when we say proceed, proceed with what happened here? Does something need to be done with regard to communication? How do we work that particular issue? As well as our future policy regarding allowing these to be safe and healthy for everyone involved in all cultures who want to share something in our chambers. So that individual, it's from a firm that was provided to me from our legal staff that was already retained, and the work has started and was not ready yet to provide information to us today, but should be by our next meeting. And says that it likely will be by our next meeting, because I said, don't make a meal out of it. Not really, I didn't say that. But I say that to most attorneys. Anyway, cancel that clear. All right. The next thing on that one is, so that is underway and will be ready to, you know, to answer the community of, well, what are you going to do about it? Because we've heard a range, and some things are realistic and some things aren't. So that being said, I think that's everything that I had on mine, and there's something I know I'm forgetting, and that's okay. All right? So that being said, do we have anyone else online? Any other elected officials who would like to say anything?
Chair Bustamante, there are no elected officials online.
There are no elected officials online, then we will move to matters from the county attorney. Let's move this to Attorney Boyd.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss threatened and pending litigation in which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant, as allowed by Section 10151 H7 of the Open Meetings Act, and also for board deliberations and administrative adjudicatory proceedings, including those on the agenda tonight, well, not for night for public hearing, there are no public hearings, under Section 10151 H3 of the Open Meetings Act. And the specific agenda items to be discussed are set forward in Item 11A of your agenda. And there's also potential action on one item set forth in Item 11B. So I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session, and we will need a roll call vote.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
We have a motion. We have a motion to go into executive session, Lisa, Commissioner Kakari Stone. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kakari Stone.
Yes.
And Chair Camilla Bustamante.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will go into executive session.
We have a motion to come out of executive session noting that we discussed only what was listed on the agenda and we made no decisions.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson to come out of executive session. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Attorney Boyd, regarding I M B resolution concerning the petition requesting the Board of County Commissioners to adopt an ordinance declaring Area 1B to be part of the traditional historic community of Aguafria. Will you please explain for the record what was discussed and what will be provided with regard to this? Thank you.
Thank you Chair Bustamante and members of the Commission. You have before you a proposed resolution addressing a petition requesting the Board of County Commissioners adopt an ordinance declaring Area 1B to be part of the traditional historic community of Aguafria or in the alternative to adopt an ordinance halting planned annexation of that area. The resolution, which I understand is presently being posted on the Board of County Commissioners' board docs website and is being made available to the public in that way and copies of which can also be made available to those in chambers, essentially details the long history of the proceedings surrounding Area 1B dating back to the 2008 settlement agreement between the County of Santa Fe and the City of Santa Fe, which recognized the residents of Area 1B had the right to petition for recognition as a part of the Aguafria traditional historic The resolution also notes that the Commission held hearings and issued a decision on an earlier such petition, earlier petition for recognition, and that that petition resulted in district court litigation. The resolution notes that the first judicial district court found that the petitioners had not produced evidence and the Board of County Commissioners did not have a basis to find that Area 1B was part of the Aguafria traditional historic community and notes that that decision became final and was not appealed. Finally, the resolution notes that, you know, as a result of the legal doctrines of res judicata and collateral estoppel, the County Commission is likely constrained from relitigating the factual issues that were before it in the 2023 proceeding, noting however that there is an exception to these doctrines for petitions that may be based on new evidence recently discovered. The proposed resolution invites the petitioners to provide a presentation or submission to the County Commissioners at its meeting on January 26, 2026, and where, you know, essentially the Board of County Commissioners is inviting the petitioners to show what basis there is for the Board to reopen these proceedings and revisit the issue of Area 1B's status as a part of the Aguafria traditional historic community. So again, this resolution does not take final action on the petition. This resolution merely notes the Board's sense of the legal and factual issues at play and invites the petitioners to present on these matters at the January 26th Board of County Commissioners meeting. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Attorney Boyd? If we have no questions for Attorney Boyd, open the floor for Commissioner Kakari Stone.
Thank you Chair Bustamante. Thank you Attorney Boyd. I wanted to make this statement particularly to the residents of Area 1B, those in the chambers here, Mr. Monroe, and all the leadership that you've taken. It's important that I want to affirm and our unwavering support for you, the families and neighbors of Area 1B. For years, as a community, you've spoken clearly, you've come together with agency and leadership and acknowledged your own cultural ties to Aguafria and its desire to preserve its rural and historic identity and to be a part of that. As a B C C, we've stood with you since 2023 through the designation of much of Area 1B within the Aguafria traditional historic community and again this September with our resolution reaffirming your cultural and historic ties. At the same time, I also acknowledge the legal constraints we are under. That's why it took two deliberations in executive sessions because this was not an easy decision. They were shaped by what we have before us today, the court rulings and the longstanding city-county annexation agreements that limit our authority as a B C C to intervene directly in annexation decisions. In some reality, we also feel stuck. This reality creates frustration and uncertainty but does not lessen my and our commitment to you. As your Commissioner, I'm actually deeply disappointed and saddened by a state of limbo for our cherished community in District 2. We continue to pledge to continue to work for a solution. I believe along with my colleagues on the Board that we share a common goal to see this matter resolved quickly and fairly and transparently by actions of the city. I'm hopeful that with new mayoral leadership in the city and continued but stronger collaborations with city councilors, I've reached out to a few already, we can move beyond years of conflict and towards a solution. I think the resolution establishes that and our commitment to resolve through negotiations with the City of Santa Fe. You as Area 1B deserve clarity, respect, and action. We hope that this will change as soon as the mayoral elections are over with and we stand together with you to ensure that your future reflects the values and histories that make Santa Fe strong. Please know that we still stand in support of you, but we are within legal constraints at this moment.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair and thank you for joining us today. The Commissioner Kakari Stone said it well, but I remember following closely the 1B annexation before either of us were commissioners, that issue, and I remember the history presentations by Ilaria Romero and William Mee, among others, about the connection of 1B to the Aguafria community. And to reiterate what Commissioner Kakari Stone said, the first judicial district's court, district court's decision has put us in a little bit of a bind. And so providing new evidence, additional evidence that backs up the initial claims would go a long way. And if those are not to be found or there's not will for that, so be it. I do have optimism because I've listened to the recent mayoral forums that this issue may change radically in the next three months. That's not a guarantee, of course, but it is something that we have before us, those of us who are able to vote in that election. So the political environment's shifting nature is something that we can look to and also advocate around. So in general, I think that this Commission, my colleagues and I are supportive of your efforts and this is the path forward because of the judicial court's ruling. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, I'll just add, I mean, you two put it very well, but we do support your right to self-determination and we'll do the best of our ability within what's legal to support you. That's it.
Thank you Commissioner. I want to just note the work that the Commissioner Kakari Stone put into trying to find the best solution for how to move forward and the legal consequence has become apparent and I know that every effort was made to really consider how, what could and could not be done, but I hear everything that has been stated. There is a new political climate change, so changing. So let's call for, if there are no further comments, a motion for the resolution concerning the petition requesting Board of County Commissioners.
I'll move to approve a resolution concerning the petition requesting the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Fe County, New Mexico to adopt an ordinance declaring Area 1B to be part of the traditional historic community of Aguafria or adopt an ordinance halting planned city annexation and declaring Area 1B to be retained in Santa Fe County.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Johnson, a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution number please?
Madam Chair, that resolution is 2025-113.
113, thank you. Thank you and thank you to everyone who put effort into this. Attorney Boyd, Rachel, thank you for your legal support, and Manager Schaefer, thank you. Okay, any concluding business announcements? Any further announcements? We have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Hughes. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.